I'll go ahead and call the budget work session for May the 16th, 2017 for Bristol, Virginia City Council to order. Again, this is, I think, the sixth meeting that we've had so far about the budget. And I appreciate those of the public that are in attendance and have been, especially those that came out this past Saturday as we had a very long meeting. As many of y'all will note that have been here before, you know, this is again a work session for councils, so there is no items for public comment, although we appreciate you being here. The meetings are also being recorded, so for those that have or are inclined, you can watch later, and I would encourage you to do that. There will be opportunity for the public to speak. You can speak at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is next Tuesday, 23rd, during non-agenda items. And we have a budget, public hearing for the budget scheduled on Tuesday, May 30th at 6:00 PM, and that will be an opportunity for the public to comment as well, and we look forward to participation at that. Again, we have an agenda to work through tonight. I would encourage us to try to get through this tonight because we've been asking some questions. These are some things that we've either haven't got to and keep getting put off, like landfill and capital, or things that we've asked, discussed once and asked for additional information to come back. But we really need to get through tonight all of the asking of questions because Thursday's meeting, we need to begin to pull all this information together to put a budget in place so that it can be advertised in time for the public hearing that's scheduled May 30th, and then we can have time after that to take any feedback we receive from the public and incorporate those comments, and then have a first and second reading in our meetings in June in time to pass the budget before the fiscal year starts July 1st. So, all right. With that being said, we'll go ahead and work through the agenda. Item number one, tax rate adjustment discussion. Ms. Crowder?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to give you all an update. As you know, that last week, the Commissioner certified a new value for properties in the city, and that was $1,137,761,770. In looking at that and the requirement in the state statute that we can only increase by 1%, that will require us to have to adjust the tax rate from $1.19 to $1.17. We will do that process in conjunction or parallel with the budget, and so there's a public hearing that's required for that item alone, and we would propose having that on May 30th, the same night you have the one for the budget.
Okay. Any comments? Again, as it was pointed out, I know the Treasurer, because she's sitting here, had already sent out the tax bills with the current rate on them, and so as we adjust this, then that'll be reflected in the second billing that comes in the fall that's due in December. So, I know that may be a little confusing to some people, and some people have already gotten their bills, they should have. I know I did the other day, so... But just so people understand that the rate, before we could get all those, all that information and work through the adjustment, the Treasurer had to make sure the bills were out in time before the due date. So, all right. Anything else? All right. Move to item number two, Bristol, Virginia Public School Discussion. Dr. Perigien?
Good. Amy and Jill, if you'll allow me, just for, this is the first time that I've had to present before you on a live feed, so I'm a little bit nervous, so I have some prepared remarks. Anyway, so before I start from my prepared remarks, let me say thank you to providing the live feed. I was unavailable to be here for the entire day on Saturday, but I was able to view from home and also from my car on the phone, so it's, that's a great service to the citizens of Bristol, Virginia, and also to the employees who, you know, would like to be at as many things as we can and aren't always able to do that. So, thank you for making that available. I do appreciate that.
Hopefully not while you were driving in your car.
No, it was while my, my wife was taking care, I was, she was getting retail therapy, and I was waiting patiently in the car. In the city of Bristol, might I add. So, but anyway, so thank you again for that. That it really is, I didn't realize what a great service that would be, but it really, I didn't think that changing to a live feed would be that beneficial, but it's already been beneficial.
Thank Councilman Wingard and his daughter for suggesting that and so forth. It's all, Dr. Perigien?
Great idea. Great idea.
It was.
Yeah, absolutely. And then secondly, I would say that our, you also might want to send a thank you out to the class of 2017. Mayor Hartley was able to attend our senior awards banquet yesterday and share some remarks, but after all these scholarships and awards were given out yesterday, the senior class of 2017 brought an addition, actually left an additional one point, just a little, $1,050,000 into the local economy because they received that in scholarships that the parents of those students who are citizens and taxpayers in the city will get to keep in their pockets over the next four years. I'm just as proud as I can be of those students. I mean, a million, $1,052,000 was the, was the total awards and scholarships given yesterday. So, I just wanted to, to share that information with you as well. But now, move on to my prepared, my prepared remarks. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, and Ms. Crowder, it is my privilege to come before you tonight to present an update on the budget process for our school system. Since our budget was approved by the school board, there have been many changes. I will share just a couple of those changes with you tonight. The first change, which I'm sure that you're already aware, is that Ms. Crowder, our city manager, has recommended a reduction of $98,000 from our original request, budget request to City Council. So, that had an impact on our school's budget, and of course, you know, we're still waiting to, for the approval there, but that certainly is an impact. Additionally, due to the lack of sufficient participation in the early retirement incentive program that we offered to our employees, we've also had a significant revenue stream that we were counting on be reduced for the 2017-18 budget. Of course, there have been other small changes since I last stood before you, but these two are the most significant areas that we're suffering as we're working through our budget process as well. So, I know that that sounds like that I'm getting ready to identify another problem that will have an impact on the city's budget. However, I'm happy to say that that's not the case tonight. A couple of weeks ago, when we all heard that our potential property tax revenue was going to be $2 million short of last year's mark, I think that many city residents and employees were all shook to our very core. When problems such as this arise, leaders have two choices to make. Number one, we can point out problems, point fingers, feel sorry for ourselves, and spin our proverbial wheels. Or two, we can identify solutions, correct mistakes, accept challenges, and take the bull by the horns. Bristol, Virginia School, the Bristol, Virginia School Board has decided to choose the latter, and without speaking for City Council, I'm inclined to believe and hope that you've also chosen that path as well. I'm proud to stand before you tonight to tell you that I see a change in the tide of the city of Bristol. I see a new sense of collaboration and cooperation developing between the various departments of our city. I see leaders developing the outside-the-box kind of ideas that it's going to take to change our city's financial position. I also see individual department interests being set aside in order to tend to the greater good, which is the well-being of our city as a whole. I'm excited to be a part of the solutions that are starting to take hold in our city that, in my opinion, will become part of the turnaround story for Bristol, Virginia, which, as you know, is a great place to live and to learn. We all currently stand at a cross point, a crossroads from which point we will leave a legacy. That includes City Council, our school board, and all of our city employees. It is my belief and hope that that legacy will be one of revitalization, restoration, and renewal. I realize that part of that turnaround will have to come from sacrifices that we make from our school system, and here's how I propose that we contribute to the greater good of the city. I've already recommended to our staff that we absorb three and a half additional positions that are currently open in our schools. We also plan to make reductions in our travel and capital line items, and we're only going to hire in critically essential areas. That will balance our budget as it's been presented to the reductions in the revenue streams that we've experienced already in the last month or two. However, additionally, I would like to suggest to City Council that with the official approval of our school board, we did discuss this at our meeting last night, but we'll have to make it official at our, at our early June meeting, that we return between $40,000 and $75,000 of 2016-17 monies to the city to be used to balance the 2017-18 budget. As you know, per city resolution, we automatically roll any unexpended funds up to $200,000 from the previous year into our capital projects account. Since we have checked off some large projects from the capital projects list, which include redoing the track, our tennis courts, and also purchasing a bus, I feel confident that we can make this one-time sacrifice without having a huge negative impact on our schools. However, let me add just a disclaimer here. I think that it would be irresponsible on all of our parts to think that we can continue to go, go to this well for future budgets. However, because of where we are currently, I think that we can make that offer to the Let me finish by saying that we still have seven weeks of fiscal year remaining, and as, as we get closer to the year end, we'll have a better idea of the exact amount that we could return. So, thank you again for supporting our schools, and I will gladly answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to thank you, Dr. Perigien, you and the members of the school board for being willing to help with the overall financial picture. You know, as we sat here Saturday, we heard various departments talk about what different items that they might be able to cut back on, and it's good to know that the schools were also looking at that and thinking of where they might be able to help, particularly, I know that, you know, over time, that both funding for the schools has decreased primarily at the state and some other levels, but being willing to come before us and suggest something, we greatly appreciate that, so...
I will say this, I would call you doctor, but you're Keith to me.
Keith to be found, sir.
You're Keith to me.
Yes, sir.
With all respect. You know, it's refreshing, from my perspective, to sit here and hear a leader of one of the big departments in this city come here and say, "We understand we have to help." Because, you know, and I think that you will see, Keith, that this school board is, I mean, this council is united in making sure with all we, all we can to take care of our children, because unfortunately, our children are the ones that, they don't have the care that they used to have. The schools have been asked to do so many things other than teach. But if they don't have a city that is fiscally responsible, then no matter what we teach them, they have nothing to grow up to. So, all I can say is, when you say $40,000 to $70,000, you're willing to kick back...
Yes, sir.
That's significant to me. Three and a half positions that you're not going to fill. I know that your employees are going to have to stretch their efforts out a little bit longer, a little bit more. Teachers, aides. But in the grand scheme of things, you're only interested in the best interest of the children that you had under your care. And you're teaching them, the school board's teaching them, to be responsible, not irresponsible. You're teaching them that government isn't the answer to everything. Government sometimes is a hindrance. Dr. Perigien, Keith, I'm glad we have a leader like yourself. The school board chose wisely, and I appreciate you coming here tonight and saying what you said. Thank you, sir.
Time will tell. Time will tell.
I'd just like to second Doug's comments. It's, it's very refreshing, and I don't know if this is the first time that the school's ever given money back to the city, but I bet it's pretty close in the first place. And we appreciate it very much.
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, sometimes you wonder, you know, why you got, you know, put in a position of unwinding a bunch of bad that's occurred over years and years and years. You know, you don't ever know. When you wake up one day, you go, you know, it's almost like, "Why me?", right? But we, here we are, and we're here, and I can tell you right now, the City Council has the best interest of this city at heart, and we, we're going to get through this. It's going to take extreme leadership. It's going to take the community coming together, because these things we're facing are tough. There's going to be a lot of motion involved. We got to take the emotion out of it. We got to look at the facts, because we're trying to manage this city, not for this year. We're trying to manage this city for 2025, and 2030, and 2035. Because when you really look at the puzzle, right, we face the $50 million bond obligation that has to be refinanced. We're facing a city that's had its finance rating reduced. We're not going to be in a position to refinance our bonds at a reasonable interest rate to where we can afford that unless we financially really are responsible on all of the operational cost items right now. That's the only thing that puts us in that position. So, the finance industry is going to look for how well we're saving, how well we're taking whatever tax dollars we can and put away. They're going to see, are we really able and are we willing to make the tough cuts to get our finances in order, right? And if they see that, right, they will increase our ratings. We will be able to borrow money at a very, very good market rate, and we'll be able to refinance the city's debt and push it out the way it should be. And those things have to happen. I don't think anybody in this room that's studied this financial situation deep enough really understands that this, this chess play we're playing on this chessboard is, is very complex, and one wrong move, and it could really have a long-lasting effect on this city. And we can't let that happen. So, I'm willing, we're willing to take the criticism, but we're also willing to listen. I think I said the other night, you know, we're going to look at some hard stuff, but I'll be the first one to admit when I'm wrong. But I'm going to challenge every single department head that comes up to that podium. Have you looked hard enough at your department? Have you thought out of the box hard enough? Have you looked at ways you've never looked at before? Because that's what it's going to take to get our finances in a healthy position. Then once they're there, then we can do the things a city's supposed to do and should have been doing for years, right? So, this problem we're facing did not occur over the last two years. This problem is not connected to the falls. I can't tell you how many times I hear that. This problem has been created over the last 25 to 30 years, and I challenge anybody to go back and start looking at the numbers and tell me otherwise, because it's obvious. We turned this city into a good old boy network. That's what we did. Nobody held themselves accountable. Everybody kept moving forward and doing whatever they thought was best, and then we wake up one day and we're in a huge financial dilemma, and we have to fix it this year. We cannot wait till next year. Time, unfortunately, is not on our side. It's now. It's basically now or never, right? We can't wait. We just can't. Can't afford to wait. The city's community cannot afford to wait. The kids in the school system cannot continue to be at the end of the financial negatives because the kids in this community, the only chance they got at the future of their life is to get an education, and it's not right for us to take monies that we could apply to the education side and put it in departments that we shouldn't have to put it into, because for whatever reason, they've gotten too big over time. That's wrong to do that, right? So, I can wake up at night and look in the mirror, because I know that that's the right thing to do, and I know when I look at, and I'm looking at the facts. I'm not talking about emotion. I'm looking and digging into the details, and I want everybody to do that, because that's what it takes. You can't have these discussions and debate these discussions on emotion or what happened last year. Look at the numbers. Look at the numbers of Bristol, Virginia compared to every other community like us, and it's going to be eye-opening what you find. It was eye-opening to me, because I had no reason to look at it before until I got on City Council. I got too many other things to do, but now that I'm here, I had to start looking at it, and when I started looking at it, it was, wow, really? Wow. Wow. How in the world have we got ourselves in this position? It's, it's amazing to me, but I thank you because you have got to set the leadership example in this community, and there's others that have to follow your lead, because we need every single department person in this city doing the right thing and setting the leadership example so we can move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Member Power, if I may, in touching base on some of the things you said earlier, is, you know, I think that it's going to be important for our, for creditors to look at the decisions that we're making physically, but I think from a private standpoint, I think it also is going to be very important that we're able to collaborate and, and work together. So, you know, I think there's two sides that we have to look at. We have to look at the fiscal side of it. We also have to look, as folks are looking at us as potential places for industry and jobs, number one, are, is our City Council and our school board and our department heads willing to work together to take on a tough situation? And I think all of our department, I've talked to most of our department heads, and I think that we all are, are ready to work to do that. I'm not going to speak for them, certainly, but, and I, I think that cooperation and collaboration are of the utmost importance at this time, and again, our kids, my job is to make sure that our kids stay at the forefront and we provide a high-quality education. So, thank you again for the support that you've given us to this point.
Yes, I want to thank you and the school board for doing this, giving us this proposal. I think y'all are doing a fabulous job here, and I do want to comment on Mr. Mumpower. You know, it's not fair to ask our kids to suffer in the school system, but unfortunately, the city has put us in a position where we are going to have to ask our kids to pay for generations of debt, and that's not fair. We have kids in our school system that will be in their 40s before this debt is resolved. We've got kids, I mean, it's going to be 25 years minimum to, to pay this debt off, and we have got to start being physically responsible now, and it's sad that it's come to this point, but it has, and we have to push through with it. We cannot let emotions get involved in this. You know, we can't stress that enough. The department heads have to come and present like you did today, and I want to applaud you for that, because we have to look at every angle that we can cut and cut back, and I want to thank you and the school board for doing that. Thank you.
We do have a slight advantage because we have the ability, you know, I work for a different board than some department heads, and we have the ability to keep that carryover account, so I don't want to stand here like that we've done some, you know, we, we have a unique opportunity that other departments don't have, and, you know, we've, talking to our board, they felt like that that could be what our contribution, you know, to make those cuts and then to hitting that capital account. Again, in the future, we, we have a responsibility to keep that fund going so that we can, you know, if we have a roof problem or, you know, we have, you know, an issue come up in a capital area that we able to take care of.
I understand that, but I'm new to government, but I, I can, think I can safely say that this is a rare night that you ever see a government department ever give money back. That has got to be extremely rare.
Y'all may think that's a good idea, but I bet Ms. Crowder and Ms. Bradlin are sitting here thinking, "I would rather know an exact number", because they've got to get their budget out. And we will do our very best, if, if we can get a deadline of, of when you need to know exactly what we can do, then we'll give you the best number that we can at that point. But like I said, we've got seven weeks left, and, you know, we still have, you know, a lot of bills coming in, and anyway, we'll do our very best to get an, an exact number to you just as quickly as, as you tell us that we need to do that.
So, just real quick, do you expect the three and a half positions are roughly $150,000, $160,000 in total?
Well, what...
Fully loaded, benefits and all?
Benefits and all. We use an average of $50,000, and that's not, it's not right, because if you hire somebody on step one, it's one thing, and if they get a family plan or a single plan, it's another thing, and if you hire somebody on step 30...
Yep.
You know what I mean? But we use 50 as an average, and so that's how we've balanced. Actually, we still have a little bit of work to do, because we, if you'll remember, we anticipated $250,000 approximately of revenue coming in from the retirement incentive, but we didn't meet that, and so that's the reason that we had to go to, you know, those positions, because we, just like you have to have a balanced budget, we also have to start with a balanced budget.
Dr. Perigien, realistically though, if push came to shove, I mean, we're looking here as a council, and I'm not going to make any bones about it from my position, we're looking at a significant, significant cuts, more so than the $548,000 deficit. There's no use hiding that, because last year, we went into monies to make up for shortfall. We're going to show that tonight. We went into $450,000 that was supposed to be set aside for capital, okay? So, what I'm saying, you're a leader. You've got some, school board members have been there since, since Moses came over on the ark or whatever it was, but, you know, realistically, it wasn't Moses, it was Noah.
It's all the same book.
Okay. See, I, okay. But realistically, if you have to squeeze more, you're not sitting here in front of this council and saying you can't squeeze more, are you, sir?
Well, you know, there are other opportunities that would have, that, you know, what I've presented to this point is to be the least impact on kids in the classroom.
Okay.
And we do have some other open positions that, that we have that are out there, but if we cut those positions, then we would have, for example, an elementary position, K through 3, we have to keep class sizes depending on the percentage of free and reduced-priced lunch students that are there. We have to keep those class sizes below that level to get additional state money. So, if we cut a position there and make that class size go up, we may save the city money on the local side, but then we lose money on the state side.
The answer is, you can.
We'll, we'll do, we'll do whatever our board, City Council appropriates. We'll make it work.
Thank you.
I ask you respectfully to keep our kids in mind as you, as you move forward.
They're going to be the last, I think, I think we could safely say that the children that, or we educate will be the, the last thing that this City Council is going to touch, the last thing, from my perspective, okay? Dr. Perigien?
Sir, thank you.
Do you have any estimate on the capital? 50 grand, 75,000?
Well, we, we could be up, we, I don't, we don't know what the total amount is going to be. Again, it can be up to 200,000. We're very confident that we won't reach that level this year. There have been years that we've reached that level, but we, we don't think we'll reach that level. We think the high end of what could be left over out of unexpended funds could be 150, and if that were the case, we, our, our plan would be to take 75 and put it in, into our capital, continue to be responsible on that end, but then to give 75 back with the hopes that in the future, we continue to get as close to that 200,000 as we possibly...
But you could give us 100, 100 and a quarter, and you could put 25 in the capital.
I can't, sir. Our school board...
But your school board could look at that, the fact that we're in a bind here in the city.
Our, our school board has the authority to make that decision. My, I'm, like Ms. Crowder, I'm a recommender.
I understand. Do you see any major capital improvements that are necessary in fiscal '17-18?
We, of course, there's always going to be some capital, but we don't have any large projects that are tennis courts, tracks. We, we bought a school bus this year. We think we're good with our fleet, so some big-ticket items like that, we don't anticipate, but we could have a roof cave-in tomorrow, and we've got a whole nother, a whole nother story, so we don't anticipate it. Ms. Crowder, any questions that you...
Again, thank you, Dr. Perigien, and please extend our thanks to the members of the school board as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Item number three, fire department discussion.
Mr. Mayor Hartley, you're the council... Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Hartley, when we were here a few days ago, one of the things that was discussed was the ratio of citizens versus firefighters, and going back this past weekend and looking to see what kind of standards are out there or any kind of guidelines to look at, I really couldn't find a set guideline on, on what that standard should be. I, I found some information that's a few years old, it had anything from one firefighter for 273 citizens, up to one firefighter for well over 1,000. for 273 citizens, up to one firefighter for well over 1,000 citizens. And there's just a whole list, it just varies city by city. And that could depend on the terrain of the city, the buildings in the city, the road structures in the city, just a variety of things. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up, is that I couldn't find a set standard. So with councils, some of the members of councils directed Saturday to look at, going back to 32 firefighters, right now, we've got 43 firefighters in the field on a 24-hour basis. This number does not count the three people we have in administration. So looking to go to a reduction of 33, and I based that number on an evenly divided number for the three shifts. This is what that would look like. Basically, going from 43 to 33, eliminating 10 and a half full-time equivalents, two administrative staff, and that would leave me, myself and the fire marshal, the secretary reverting to part-time. And as far as operations, having 33 firefighters per shift, or 33 total, 11 per shift, that would be an approximate reduction of $650,000 in salaries and benefits. And the result of that, we would certainly have to close at least one fire station, and doing that would lead to increased response times and increased burn times on the structures before we would get there versus what we have now. Some of the information here, this is kind of a rehash of back in January when we had that January Saturday meeting, but just NFPA recommends 14 firefighters on the scene of a building fire, and you can see the different tasks that the different firefighters are allocated to. Right now, we're doing these same tasks with basically 10 firefighters. So where you see the zero on the Bristol side, that means some of these firefighters are doubling up on task. And these are things that are typically done in the first five to 10 minutes of the incident, not over a course of several hours, but in the first several minutes of the incident. So a couple of scenarios versus going back to 33. If we went, you know, 33 is one scenario. Here is another scenario of 36, and that would be a savings of approximately $500,000. You know, it's hard to pinpoint an exact dollar number, not knowing who would be eliminated or how would we, you know, which ones would be reduced. But dropping back to 36, it would be very difficult to maintain three fire stations. It would be more likely two fire stations. And then another scenario is if we stayed, if we kept 39, that would be a reduction of approximately $280,000 in salary and benefits. But that, I think with that a number, we could still keep three fire stations up and running. So the one with 33, that was per the direction from Saturday, getting down to a pretty big cut. And then here are a couple other scenarios. So this is the end of it right here, and I would just respectfully ask that council consider any kind of reductions possibly through attrition. Now, I do have, you know, some retirements that are going to be coming up over this year and next year, so there is an avenue for that.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start, unless you want to.
I'd just, quick question, when you say the money projection saved, is that your salary doesn't include fringe?
That's salary and fringe, yes, sir.
Salary and fringe?
Yes, sir.
So what's the, so would you say, again, 10 and a half people is 650,000?
33 people would be 650, 36 people would be 500, and 39 would be 280.
We've got firefighters, salary and benefits range from 44,000 total package up to 59,000 for a base firefighter, depending on if they have insurance, if, whatever coverage they have through the city.
So he's using a $62,000 fully loaded amount for a fire-
With fringe.
We have fully loaded with fringe, yes.
Does that count, does that count closing a fire station?
Yes, sir, that scenario right there is closing one station.
Okay.
And that's going to a part-time secretary.
Does that fully loaded rate, to mayor, make sense?
As an estimate, as an estimate, I think.
Okay.
It's hard until you actually know the actual employees and what benefit package they're carrying, but as an estimate.
Okay, well, I use 65,000, so we're closed. I mean, we're in the ballpark, we're not, we're not far off.
With the station closing, too.
What, now, the 39 would have all three stations open, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So 33, 36, it's two stations, and 39 is three. Did you take into consideration utilities and the cost of keeping a building up, a station up? Is that part of that 650?
No, sir, it's not in there. Because it really, depending on which of the two stations, I mean, most likely, it would either be fire station number one here on Lee Street, or fire station two on Euclid Avenue. There's pros and cons in closing either one of those stations. So if, for example, we didn't have a fire truck running out of the number one station, that's, the station would still be used to house the fire marshal, fire chief, shift supervisor, there's a training room in there, there's a lot of storage in there for equipment, apparatus, trailers, stuff like that. So we'd still try to hopefully keep that open, if at all possible.
And if you close station two, could you move everything out of station two and be done with the utilities over there and the upkeep on that building?
We'd have to find a place to house the trucks that are out there, or, rather than just parking them outside in the weather.
It gives Parks and Recreation a new building, if we do that, potentially. Parks and Recreation's all the way up to Sugar Hall, and instead of being all the way up to Sugar Hall, we could be there, and that could be retro to Parks and Recreation.
No, you'd end up with an extra fire engine and things of that nature. That's what you're talking about, right?
Sir?
The fire engine, the fire truck and all of that?
Right. At Fire Station Two, we have a primary engine, an antique engine, and a second truck, a full squad, which is as big as a fire engine. So there's basically three trucks sitting out there, plus the furniture and different equipment that's inside the building.
Yeah, I think with our agreements with Bristol, Tennessee, that they could help supplement any downtown issues. So it makes sense to me to close Station One. The other two stations are out in the residential communities of the city. And we've got Bristol, Tennessee across the street, so they will always come and help, and we always go help them. So I think if we do a closed Station One would be the logical choice. We can take advantage of the agreement we have with Bristol, Tennessee.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I don't know, I've thought about that. I think you really got to be strategic about which fire station you have open, based on the value of the city assets and where, you know, where the fire stations are located, the one downtown, you know, what's, what's the proximity of that station, and what you're trying to protect versus Fire Station Three. You almost need to draw a circle around those and see, you know, you know, how many people and, you know, what's really in that circle to decide which one's the right one to shut down. Because some have more residents, but some have a lot more big businesses, like the Holiday Inn and, you know, the-
Yeah, I don't think we can shut that.
Well, Holiday Inn is that side of Station Three.
Oh, yeah, Station Three's got Vampel, it's got, you know, a lot of big businesses, plus big residential. And then Station One down here's got downtown and all the new hotels going in and everything down here. So you just got to think through that. I haven't decided what my thoughts are yet, but you got to really think about that.
Councilman Mumpower, if I can, one thing that we've looked at, I've met with Kelly Miller in GIS, and we, he did a five-mile circle around each of the stations, and they cover a lot of area, obviously. One thing to consider, Station One is not landlocked, but it's close, because we're not allowed to go across the Mary Street Bridge and the Beaver Creek Bridges. So they have to kind of detour around there, depending on where they're going to the call, so that's a consideration. Whereas at Fire Station Two, they're right there on Euclid, they can hit Lee Highway, the interstate, State Street. So, and also, Station One has more buildings in it, in that five-mile circle versus Station Two. And that's commercial and residential. So again, there are a lot of pros and cons to both.
I mean, maybe you got to run the fire trucks out and time the time from Station Two to, you know, the outer extreme of the downtown area, and see how long it takes, and do that from every station, and just see which, which one has the best response time, because it's all about response time, right?
Well, the NFPA 1710, which was the chart that I showed you a few minutes ago with the different tasks, they recommend having the first truck on the scene of a building alarm within four minutes, 90% of the time, and then the other two trucks there within eight minutes, 90% of the time. So that's something to consider.
Yeah, that was going to be my question, is you've mentioned, you know, in all these scenarios I get, or the two that involve closing a station, increased response travel times, and, I mean, what, what does that actually mean in terms of public safety? I mean, how, what, and again, I guess that's a hard question to ask without knowing which station you're talking about closing either, but, I mean, how, what would be the impact of that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor Hartley, for example, I did some numbers on Google Maps today. I live out near the mall, and from downtown station out to my house, if Station Two were to be shut down, that's a nine-minute travel time. It's only about two miles, but travel time, going through the neighborhoods and getting out to the main roads, that it was a nine-minute response. So that's just one thing to consider. So if it's going to be, instead of a four-minute response, it's going to be eight to nine-minute responses for the first truck to get there. So that's going to give a small fire a chance to become a bigger fire. So there, you know, increased property damage, and if there's somebody trapped in that fire, then their survivability rate is going to go down drastically.
But that's why I mentioned to take advantage of Bristol, Tennessee's fire station is in town, they can get anywhere in town as fast as we can.
They have a station back here on, near King College, and they've got one right down here, is it Blountville Highway? So they've, they've got two in close proximity.
Pinnacle, too.
Yeah, they're opening a new one at Pinnacle.
Yeah, that, new number five.
Did I understand you correct, from Station Two to the neighborhoods, I'm assuming you're talking Westfield out in there? From Station Two to out in Westfield, you're talking a nine-minute travel time?
No, sir, from downtown.
From downtown?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
From Lee Street.
Four for two.
Okay. That's why you couldn't close two, because they're too far away in downtown.
All right. Well, let me, let me go into what, what I researched and what I found. And I want to see if you can do the same thing, because we got to settle on this pretty soon for the budget. But I looked up the National Fire Prevention Association, NFPA, right? And I Googled it to see what was out there. So there's a report, the U.S. Fire Department Profile Report for 2015, and it just got published in April this year. And what this is, it's basically the NFPA has surveyed every fire department organization in the entire country, and they put all the statistics in this report. It's a multi-multi-page report. So it's got every, every size city of any magnitude, and they basically take that data and they summarize it into multiple different tables and graphs to show you how the rest of the country, the rest of the region, they break it into the south versus the west versus the northeast, how they operate. And it was, it was interesting to look through this, and I challenge everybody to look at this, because it's got the type of information that we're, we're talking about. So when you go to page three of this report, when we go to the first fact sheet, let me touch that just real quick, because I think Kevin Wingo brought this up in a previous meeting. They do the demographics on all fire stations across the country. So 67% of all fire stations are all volunteer. 67% are all volunteer. 18% are mostly volunteer. So that's 80, what, 5% is either all volunteer or mostly volunteer, and this is the entire country. 9% is all career-paid firemen. Only 9%, only one out of 10 fire departments in the country are all career and all paid. And another 6% are mostly career. So if you add those two up, 15% are roughly paid, and 85% are volunteer. So that's an astonishing fact, right? But that's, that's the facts. This is a survey of every department across the country. And that kind of surprised me, I didn't know where Kevin had got his number, but-
I got it from their website.
Right there it is, right there it is, in black and white. Shows the graphs and where the data came from. So then you keep, then you keep scrolling down, right? It does a lot of demographics on male versus female, age and all that stuff, and we're not talking about any of that. So it puts out this 2015 U.S. Fire Department Profile, and it shows you kind of a synopsis that it surveyed 29,727 fire departments. So that's what that data is based on. This is not based on like 100 fire stations. 29,727 fire stations responded to this survey. So this survey is statistically valid, right? It's a, it's a big number. It tells you all the equipment, et cetera, but I want to go to page three, because it starts to talk about ratios. So I come down to page three, and I'll just read the paragraph. It says, "Since 1986, the number of career firefighters in the U.S. has increased steadily from 237,750 in 1986 to about 354,600 in 2013," which is a 49% increase in career-paid firefighters across the country. "In 2015, the number of career firefighters dropped from the high in 2013 to 354,600, a decrease of about 2.5%." So there's roughly 350,000 paid firefighters in the country. And it says, "The rates of career firefighters per 1,000 people population protected from mostly all career departments have remained in a range of 1.54 to 1.76 career firefighters per 1,000 people. 1.54 to 1.76 career firefighters per 1,000." So you do the math, our last census is 17,800 and something, our last estimate is 17,200 population. You divide that by 1,000, it's 17.2. You multiply that by 1.65, which is the average of the 1.54 and 1.76, right? And you get 28.4. So if we run to those ratios, right in the middle, it says that a city of the size of Bristol, Virginia, 17,200, should have 28.4 career-paid firefighters. And that hits right in the middle of the national average. Okay, so, then I went and looked, I took this, and I went and looked at some of our demographic data that you had done and presented, remember, in the, in the locality report, right? And then I went and I looked at some other cities, so I expanded it. I went and looked at Kingsport, Tennessee, Johnson City, Tennessee, Coquettle, Tennessee, Bristol, Tennessee, still put in Waynesboro in there, and Staunton. So I kind of expanded it to see what it told me. And I looked at the census figures from 2014, plugged them in the spreadsheet, so I got the exact census numbers of every one of those cities, right? Went and looked at all their websites and put in how many paid firemen, you know, they have in those cities, and I did the math. So, and then what I did, to be fair, because some are a little higher, some are a little lower, I averaged it. I said, you know, take a big population of a bunch of cities, and let's just average the numbers. What does it tell us? So when I did all those cities and I averaged it, it came out to 1.73 paid firemen per 1,000 population. Almost dead on what that NFPA said. And I was just like, well, that's, okay, that, that starts to make sense. That is statistically valid information. That's real information, because those are the way those cities are operating. And then I said, okay, we're sitting here at 17,141, and I used the number of 46, because we had 46 in the budget. If you put 43, it changes the number, I could do that. So in order for us to hit that same 1.73- So in order for us to hit that same 1.73 ratio that those averages tell us it's 30 paid firemen, give you a 1.75 career firefighter per 1,000 population in the city of Bristol. I think the other night I said my ratio was 1 to 550, right? So that number comes out to 32. NFPA comes in and shows me that it's really maybe more like 30, and that's assuming you stay with 100% career paid firefighter city. So, you know, I just sit back and I said, wow, you know, it's, it's really, really unfortunate that this city has not looked and tried to manage this city like this. So over years and years and years, right? And I tried to reconcile, and I haven't been able to do it yet, but I tried to reconcile what got us here. And I said, well, I know we made a big annexation back in the mid-'70s, like '73 or '74. We annexed, went out and captured the rest of McChesney Heights, Spring Lake, Village Green. We went up and captured almost exit seven and all that. We built a brand-new school, Van Pelt, and voila, guess what? We built a fire station up there to support the new school and all those neighborhoods that all of a sudden were in the city. So we reconciled that we needed a third fire station, and the population back then was pushing 21,000, 22,000, and it peaked right there. So when we did that, the city peaked. And then since then, it's gone south. And here we wake up 35 years later, and the population is 17,200. So the population of Bristol has dropped almost 20 to 22% during that same time period. And we've done really nothing to try to, you know, pull the services back to that population level over time. So as you just let that happen, it, it grows in a direction that we come here today and we say, why are we, you know, why are we this far out of whack? And that's, and that's to me how it happened. You know, somebody else could go research and tell me it happened different, but that's what the picture looks like to me. That's, that makes sense to me. So I'll sit here and tell you 30 to 32 is the right number. Two fire stations is the right number. This report, the NFPA report also, go, it goes into everything. It goes into number of fire stations for the population size of the cities. It goes into every single statistic that we're talking about tonight. And it told me that you need two fire stations, you need that number of firefighters, and, um, and that's, that's what we got to do, folks. We can't talk about this stuff by emotion. You got to go to the numbers and see what the numbers tell us, and how do we compare, and how do we compare to these other towns and cities like us? And that's what the numbers are telling us. So it's not me saying this after the National Fire Protection Association is showing it with survey numbers across the entire country. And I don't know what to tell you, folks, but it is what it is. I mean, I mean, the numbers aren't lying. And I've looked at this every single angle I could, took, you know, took your information and looked at it again, looked at other cities, added to it, looked at NFPA, and it all comes back to the same number.
Let me say this, Mr. Mr. Mumpower, um, you mentioned the fact we annexed in the '70s. The last statesman quality that was done to save the city of Bristol, Virginia, was done by George Warren. He was a state senator. He's, you know, was Commonwealth Attorney for the City of Bristol, and he saw the fact that if Bristol didn't annex into exit seven area, that Bristol would die. He saw that in the 1970s. It cost him his state senate seats, Rick Boucher. Okay? That's a fact. Bristol would have been a town by now if not for George Warren. Fact. He did a statesman-like act. He took the political heat. Okay? There hasn't been one council in 30 years, period, that is prepared to do anything but benefit themselves, benefit a family member, or whatever. Now, the bottom line is, government can't keep on, especially a Bristol city government the size of Bristol. And by the way, in 1970s, when we annexed, we had a lot of jobs here. We had a lot of industry here. They're gone. They're gone. Bottom line is, Mr. Mumpower, numbers don't lie. The way we've lived in Bristol has been beyond our means for a long time. People have been paid too much money for a long time. This, this council, and we're going to look at other departments, nobody's, there's statistics for every department, and we're going to talk about them. But I agree with Mr. Mumpower, 30, 28 to 32 is the range for the fire department. There's going to have to be a massive cut in the fire department budget. That's my position. Thank you.
I'd just like to commend Mr. Mumpower for doing all that research because that, that does take time, and I, I'm certainly appreciative of that information.
You're welcome. And I would recommend going forward, this is the kind of report that we should have in our policies that we manage the department by. This report is put out every year, and it goes back to 1986. So this is, and you can track the trends and you can track everything to make sure you're staying in line or you're getting out of whack. So this is a very, very good management tool.
You know, budget and, budget can't be just, we keep doing what we did last year, just a little bit different and knock a few things off and hope we can generate some revenue from some new ideas. That's not, that's not management of the city. Period.
Anybody, anybody has anything?
I, I would like to say one thing in defense of the chief. He's only been on the job, so he's inherited, uh, almost all these problems.
Well, yeah, now he's gets to, now he gets to walling with them.
Unfortunately, and we're the council that has to straighten it out, and you're the chief that has to straighten it out with us, and that's-
It's not personal. It's not personal. I already know the man.
No, and I would say the chief did what all good chiefs do. He looked at the, the numbers, he looked at what they were doing, and he said, what else can this department do to, to be more productive? And he came in here with a proposal for the Bristol Life Saving Crew, and I commend him for that. I didn't agree with that approach, but, you know, that's what, that's what managers typically do. You look at, you look at what you should be doing more with the department if you feel and find that you have more means to do certain things. So, uh, maybe that's something we'll get to down the road. I don't think the timing was right for that, but, um, we'll see. But I do, you know, you gotta, you gotta give him a pat on the back for trying. I mean, you gotta look at those things, but you gotta look in more detail, chief. I mean, I, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and criticize you a lot, but you, I mean, you gotta, you gotta really dig into this stuff, NFPA stuff, and find this stuff for us and, you know, help us understand these numbers. And if some, something's out of whack, tell us why it's out of whack because, again, we're going to be the first to admit when we're wrong. But we want to see, we want to see the facts, you know, and where, where it's coming from and make sure we make good decisions, right? The only way you can make good decisions is look at the facts.
You can comment, Chief?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, I guess if we have no questions, then we can, uh, continue through these discussions and then when we get probably tomorrow and bring, figure out exactly where we want to land with some of this, uh, number-wise, so. Okay. So now we'll move to item number four, uh, physical year 18 budget update and budget adjustments.
So tonight you all received a, a new draft copy of the budget. Ms. Bradlin has been busy, as have several of us, um, looking at, uh, the things that we went through and made adjustments to Saturday, and so we have, uh, captured those things. In addition, citywide, we have taken looks yesterday and today at communications, motor fuel and lubricants, as well as insurance, and so we have built in some initial changes in those items. Uh, the first item, communications, you know, as, as we mentioned on Saturday, we are in the process of getting quotes on the phone system, and so that is something that will continue. But just going through yesterday and taking a quick look at some lines that could be eliminated, we identified a little over $10,000 initially. And so what I will commit to you all is that within three months, we'll come back and tell you the results of that, uh, negotiation on the phone system. But at this time, I would be nervous depending on number for that since we haven't finished that negotiation. Motor fuel and lubricants, uh, we went back and looked at a three-year average, and based on that, we've reduced that line item across the city $45,000, um, and that's already built into the document you have in front of you. And then on insurance, we, we went back as well, and there were a couple small departments that we felt confident, I should say, I shouldn't say confident, that, that were willing to take, to predict that those positions would stay, and we did cut the insurance in those departments. In the larger departments where we have transitions, and you might have somebody leave who doesn't have insurance, and you hire somebody that has insurance, maybe it's even family insurance, we really don't feel comfortable, we wouldn't recommend, let me say, we wouldn't recommend cutting the larger department insurance lines because of that, because that does happen throughout the year. And so with that, if you flip to the back page, you've probably already seen, uh, and of course, we've built in the tax rate in this as well. So, you know, you all did an excellent job Saturday, and hopefully you know that when we left, um, Tamara, what was that number? Do you remember right off?
Did we get the due?
Yes.
I had 200 and something. I don't know what, um-
It, it was around 250 is what I'm going to say.
Depending on whether we do the 30, 35,000 that we talked about on the city attorney stuff.
Right. And that's still on my list, so right now it's still in there.
It was IDA. It was IDA issue.
Yeah, it was 95,000 that we talked about, whether 65 was going to be allowed to be taken when the, when the new city-
Oh, I've taken the 65 out. What I've left in is the 30 that we talked about for the study, and so I'm still researching that.
I thought it was a lobbyist. We were going to hire some lobbyists to lobby to get a Amtrak or something, some rail service to Bristol. And right now with the budget situation, we don't need any more studies or lobbyists. We've done that with IDA in the past, you know, 127,000 dollars a year until this year. I, I, my personal opinion is go ahead and draft it without, uh, we, you know, if, if, if Amtrak wants to come here, if somebody wants to come here and run rail service, that's a private industry, they can do it, but we don't need to spend money hiring somebody in Richmond to lobby for whatever. Yes, it's a waste of money that can go to a kid, or a job for a teacher, or a job for a policeman. That's my opinion.
So what is the 30? I mean, we'll-
And like I say, that, that was on my list, and I, I did say lobbyists the other day. They are managing the passenger rail study that the grants from A R C, D H C D, and the Tobacco Commission, uh, were awarded to us.
Are we contractually bound to that management review of that transit system?
And that's what you all asked on Saturday.
Oh, and you don't know?
And I will have an answer for you Thursday. Uh, I did focus on these other items first. Um, so that's why I didn't take it out, uh, at this point, but it, it's just the 30 left in there in addition to the, the, the only other in the transfer to the IDA is the audit, um, because they have to do a separate audit.
How much is that?
It's-
Minimum, I hope.
Projected at 9, 9130?
I'm flipping that now. It's 9130.
That's all they're getting from us, IDA, that's all they're getting from us then is that, as it stands right now.
9130 is for the audit, which is necessary, and then the 30 is in there right now for the-
We're going to debate that issue.
And we can, and just, so no, today, I'm just giving you an update. Um, and so you flip to the back page and you see that the, the shortage amount to balance it, uh, would be 15,820. That does, you know, as you say, if you take the, the 30 out, that would decrease that. If you put in the, uh, 40 to 75 from the schools, would decrease that as well. Neither of those have been built into this.
Okay.
At this moment in time.
So, so assuming that you build some in for the schools, you would, basically, we would stand at probably about, have met the shortfall. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Wait a minute. What was the question again, Mayor?
That, right now we stand at 15,000 with what's in this document, but with what, uh, the school system proposed, they said a minimum, they felt comfortable proposing a minimum of around 40 to make 75, so that, you know, that, which is not factored in here. So right now, when you factor their money in here, then our budget would be balanced.
With the, with the $548,000 that is proposed, that she has alleged or said, so is, but that does account the fact that last year, the proposed budget, we had to feed in money from 400 and some thousand dollars to make up the shortfall from last year projected.
Well, you're, you're miss, I know what's, what you're looking at is the reserve for last year and the reserve for this year. That's money that we are almost positive we're going to put in there. It's not a matter of taking money out of the reserve. This year's projection was a million dollars. Last year's was a million 450. So it's not a case that we had to take 450 out of the budget, it's just, we made that projection or close to it, and then we got to put another million away this year.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, the bottom line is, though, regardless, we need to be efficient with our monies and so forth and so on, and we need to put money, rewards back to the taxpayers in the city that are, that have paid for so long. So maybe we've met the quota right now on paper, but I don't think we're through. I don't think we're anywhere near through cutting.
And that's why it's an up, just an update.
Thank you. We'll move now to, uh, outside agencies discussion, item number five.
All right. What page is that on now?
Yeah.
That was, um, is that?
It's near the end of the experience.
The first one?
They're mixed.
On page 29.
Yeah, it's various places. I think originally you had that on a separate spreadsheet.
We have a separate sheet here that lists the mandated and non-mandated.
Well, you start with United Way, that's easy. They don't want anything. They don't get anything. I mean, that's where we're starting.
That's just from previous years. They just haven't removed the count yet.
Yeah.
Does everybody have that sheet, or do you need us to make a few copies?
I have mine. I brought it. I was just going to go through the proposed budget that was delivered. I can dig mine out.
No. Well, it's, it's, it's in there, but I think this sheet, this sheet is what you're talking about describing. I think this sheet would be more-
Yeah, these were given out originally.
Yeah. Do you want to take a brief, let her make copies?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll go ahead and take a brief recess, and while you can make some-
Make some new copies.
You make some new copies for everyone.
I just-
All right. So we'll stand recess for a minute. Go ahead. Thank the city manager for, uh, providing, making the copy for everyone, so we're all literally on the same page. Okay, outside agency discussions. As everyone will remember, um, you know, some of these outside agencies are mandated, um, you know, by, um, uh, state statute or, or, and with a formulaic, uh, way that we fund them. Some of these are non-mandated. Some of these are, uh, either agreements or pass through money, and then we have a category down there of memberships, and, uh, the agencies came, uh, at our first meeting, uh, on May the 1st, that Monday night, and, uh, presented to council. So now, uh, we can go back and see, uh, if we want to make any adjustments to what the, uh, city manager had proposed in her budget, so. Any, any thoughts, any comments? Or, I mean, just go down the list?
Is this it right now?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, you talking, we're, we're talking about the non-mandated, or just any in particular?
Well, the, really, the mandated, I don't think there's, uh, you know, again, all of those we have to, have to fund, um-
So the stuff in the green is the mandated?
Yes, yes, everything in there.
And so the city manager tells us we have to fund every one of those at those levels?
They're based on, uh, prior agreements with the county. Most of the joint projects.
Yeah, or, or, or state, um-
State-funded.
State-funded, yeah.
Mr., um, Eads, you and I discussed, uh, the Bristol Country Music Museum Association, 100,000.
Yes.
I'd ask you to look into whether or not we had a contractual obligation with the Bristol Country Music Museum. And you advised me that you actually have a tape of the meetings and so forth and so on.
Well, I don't have the tape in my possession.
Oh, sorry. Okay, okay.
The city has that tape, 'cause it would've been recorded at a council meeting. But what I do have is a copy of the minutes from August the twenty-third of two thousand and eleven. And item number six on the agenda on that night was a discussion on possible action on commitment of Bristol, Virginia's financial and other support for the birthplace of Country Music Alliance Cultural Heritage Center. In short, there was a discussion in regards to that. Councilmember Odom made a motion to commit up to five hundred thousand dollars, if needed, to the birthplace of Country Music Alliance Cultural Heritage Center. The motion was seconded by the Vice Mayor Steele, and was, it was a unanimous, no, I take that back, only, there was only one nay, and that was Mr. Heaney.
The wisest one in that group, the wisest man in that group. But anyway, so you're saying the language used in there was "if needed"?
That's correct.
Okay, so can you give us a legal opinion? Bottom line is, if I understood correctly, when B C M's representatives have been here, they were showing a profit. And the question was asked in prior meetings if that included the monies from, from the city, or excluded the monies. In other words, they balancing it and so forth with the monies from the city of Bristol, Virginia. And that's on the videos and so forth that have been already done. So, if needed, would, from your legal perspective, that would say that it's dire, or it's necessary to continue their operation, would be needed, is that...
It's, it's a condition.
It is a condition. So B C M would have to come in here and show a need on their book, show us their books, and show a need, pressing need, for us to give them any amount of money, certainly up to a hundred thousand dollars. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, based upon the minutes of this meeting. I have not seen, and I don't believe there's any record of any written contract with the B C M. So just based upon the minutes and what was voted on in August of two thousand and eleven, I think it was, there was no ordinance passed, there was no contract signed that I've been able to find. So it appears that the B C M would need to show a need.
So the bottom line is, that hundred thousand dollars that's forwarded in this budget could be something that potentially could be taken off the fiscal seventeen, eighteen budget, correct?
If they could not show a need, yes.
All right, all right. And we could ask for an accountant, even our own accountant, to give us an opinion if there is a need or not, I'm assuming.
Well, we would have, I mean, you, we would have to know the B C M's numbers, I mean...
Well, and I, I believe that the way that money, although it was paid out over time, the idea was there was a similar commitment by the city of Bristol, Tennessee. And both of those commitments were used to leverage state funding, particularly the funding from the state of Tennessee, to help complete the project. I think rather than make a commitment and all, and pay that amount out in one year, they, they did it over time. And I believe this is the last year of that, of that agreement. Is that correct, Ms. Crowder?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, you know, again, in some ways, while there may not be an agreement, you know, if that money was used to leverage and as part of that match, and, you know, being four years into a five-year agreement, I think in some ways, we, particularly if it's used, is counted as a leverage in the match, I would think there was a moral obligation to fulfill that commitment.
Well, I'll say this, I'd like to, you know, Mr. Eads, realistically, you know, the question I have is, you know, we're looking at jobs here for people that are actually working for the city. That's how dire the situation is. So we have to question as council, what is our moral obligation to our employees? And I'm certainly, you know, for the taxpayers, I'm gonna cut. But if we can eliminate a hundred thousand dollars for something that is a nonprofit organization, you know, my obligation is to take care of the employees. And that includes, you know, rather than thirty-five firefighters, we may be talking thirty-six, thirty-seven. I'm just giving us an area. So, you know, I'd like a legal opinion, just because a council of two thousand and eleven, and also, I mind this, this, this council is the one that got us in the mess, in the mess of the falls. Realistically, I don't have any desire to follow anything from my perspective, my vote, that they did and agreed to do, period. And while we're talking about that, Believe in Bristol, I don't think we need to fund Believe in Bristol, any amount of money. That is a downtown organization, is another nonprofit. Downtown organizations are, they have their shops and so forth. If they wanna advertise, advertise. But that's not incumbent upon the citizens of Bristol, Virginia to pay Believe in Bristol. Rhythm and Roots, you know, we can do in-kind transactions. Somebody, a good, dear friend of mine suggested that we pay for the cleanup and trash for Rhythm and Roots, an in-kind thing on Monday. Maybe it'll be part of the job duties anyway, and won't cost us anything. But, you know, that's another twenty K, a hundred K, twenty K. You know, realistically, folks, why should, and a hundred and seventy-five thousand, I forgot about the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Okay, why should, if we're gonna have to cut real jobs of real citizens, why should these outside agencies, non-mandated, get a pass? And how can we, you talk about morally, how can we morally vote to fund these groups at the expense of our citizenry, at the expense of our people that work for the city? Help me figure that one out.
Well, I, I will say this, Councilman Flainer, I mean, one, having to cut, as we pointed out earlier, the budget is balanced, so we're not making cuts to balance the budget. If, at this point, any additional cuts we are making might be because we don't feel those are necessary services. You don't feel, you know, but it's not out of necessity to balance a budget to budget. We, you know, the city manager gave us the update. We, you know, so we're not forced, like we fought, say, two weeks ago when the commissioner of revenue came in and gave us a number that would have forced some very severe cuts. Now, with that said, I, I will say, when, you know, and when all of these groups bring, you know, while they're, they're not city groups, particularly the Convention and Visitors Bureau and Believe in Bristol, do help, one, bring, the Convention and Visitors Bureau in particular helps bring revenue in through tourism and the meals and lodging tax. As far as Believe in Bristol, they help do a lot for economic development downtown and revitalizing our downtown, which, and again, you know, at that, to just cut them out would, would put the burden back on a staff. And currently, we don't have a Director of Economic Development. So in some ways, they, the function that they're serving takes some of the burden off of the city staff in, in working with businesses and encouraging small businesses downtown. And the Convention and Visitors Bureau, again, if they're not providing that service in marketing the community and bringing visitors in here that help us get the, the meals and lodging tax, then that's something that we would have to do on ourselves, or otherwise, then that, again, we would be declining our revenues. And at this point, we don't, that's one of the things that, why, when we started this budget, we saw that the revenues are declining. So we don't need to do anything, in my opinion, that's gonna make the revenues continue to decline.
A lot of the Bristol, I mean, state of Tennessee and the state of Virginia tourism bureaus contribute money to the Believe in Bristol thing. So it's, you run the risk of losing all those funds if you don't make some kind of local contribution. And while I agree with Mr. Flainer, the, the level of funding certainly can be reduced. I don't think we wanna eliminate it totally. Because they are providing a function, they do the push festival and those kinds of things. That Rhythm and Roots started out as just a little dinky thing, and now it's grown into magnificent tourist tracks.
And I, and I, I think that's, at least it is reasonable to discuss the compromise on what is asked for in this budget and so forth and so on. And as long as we can do that, I don't have a problem with that.
I think from my perspective, you know, this, this council, and I think all the organizations on this sheet have been in this chamber, right? We've, we've talked to pretty much every one of them, and they, I think they all clearly understand now, and if they don't, they need to come back in here, that whatever value they bring to the city, they better be very specific and clear about that value. Because when we give money, we want a return on that money. We're not just, this is not something, we're just handing out cash. And so I'll just tell you, of all the organizations that've come in here, on a scale of one to ten, the presentation and discussion has been very much below average. It's been very much a two or a three. So they have not done a stellar job of defining what they do and what, where the dollars are spent, and what value we get back out of every dollar that we give them. So that's the expectation now. So I, you know, I'm one of those guys that I'll give you a free pass for one year, 'cause now you know the expectations, right? You clearly know what you're supposed to do next year. So we cut it some, we don't cut it out. But they now have a chance to take what we give them and go away and apply those dollars smarter and harder, and come back in here and tell us what we got out of that, if they want them to go back up next year, or not go down anymore. So, in a contractual obligation like the Country Music Museum, you need to go find the contract and read it, 'cause we can't, we can't not abide by our contractual obligations. I mean, that's just, we're not gonna do that. So what are they? What's it say? What can we do? That's what we need to know, right on that one.
Well, at this time, there, there is no contract.
It's just a moral obligation.
It's just a, it was a vote by council, I mean, and I'll give you the legal opinion I have right now. There's no contract. It was a vote, and then I think with the condition that they placed in that vote, if needed, I think that clarifies exactly what would be expected for the Bristol Country Music Alliance to do, would be to show a need.
Be more, be more specific, so when the agreement was placed, there was a...
There was no agreement.
There was a resolution passed?
There was no resolution passed, there was no, no ordinance. There was no con, no contract signed. It was basically a discussion item. From my understanding, council then had this discussion, and they voted at that time four to one to fund five hundred thousand dollars over five years, if needed. And so...
On that issue, I, I can agree to cut it to fifty. And the reason I say fifty is because that council that approved the five, up, up to five hundred thousand, if needed, gave them fifty thousand as they were leaving office. And the museum was ecstatic, but they never asked for it. So our obligation of five hundred thousand would be met by paying the fifty.
That's fifty thousand. You know, but I do think that we need to, they need to, instead of keep coming in here, and you know, when you say B C M, and by the way, they put a bunch of squeeze on us to vote to give grants and stuff, and they ridiculed the councilmen up here that there was a presentation here for council that was poor, another poor presentation, and three councilmen at that time decided not to ask for the state, for the B C M to apply for a grant. You know, realistically, that's Rhythm and Roots, that's B C M. I mean, you know, we're talking part and parcel of the same organization that keeps coming in here and sucking Bristol, Virginia dry. And they go to Bristol, Tennessee and do the same thing. And it's party all the time, like it's nineteen ninety-nine. Okay, now, I'll tell you, I got a problem with it. I got a problem with free money. And I'd like to see the numbers generate, what they get tourism, stuff like this, I'd actually like to see the numbers. I asked two weeks ago to see how many free tickets Rhythm and Roots gave out, and I haven't got it yet.
Yeah, we did.
Well, I haven't got it.
It was on the printout the other day on your, at your desk, I mean, at your seat.
Well, I didn't bother to read it then, because it, how many tickets they give out?
Thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand dollars worth of free tickets?
No, thirteen thousand tickets.
Thirteen thousand tickets?
To volunteers and to sponsors and to the, all, all entertainers are allowed to have one ticket plus one for guests.
Thirteen thousand.
All the entertainment groups come, they get a ticket.
That's not thirteen thousand people.
And all their volunteers, they have...
They give out, that's what she had the sheet, it's either, I think it was around thirteen or fourteen.
Taxpayers of Bristol, Virginia paid for those thirteen thousand free tickets.
There's no cost involved, it's just a case, they don't get the revenue for every ticket they give away, that's a ticket not sold. But they get volunteers to do a lot of work down there that normally you'd have to pay somebody to do.
And some of those would go to sponsors as well, and they would be sponsor comps, and I mean, that's...
Other sponsors.
It's not, not a number like thirteen thousand.
Yeah, it was thirteen thousand.
No, sponsors, right, I get that, right?
You got a copy.
You give a couple hundred thousand dollars as a sponsor, you get a few tickets, right? You're a volunteer, you get a ticket or two. You're an entertainer, but you're not gonna add that up and come up to thirteen thousand tickets.
And then they say there's forty thousand attendance, we'll subtract the thirteen thousand. Really, how many people are really here? And that's not counting the ones that come in on the side and saying, "I'm gonna eat downtown, get in free." I'd really like to know.
They, they come into five different groups, Councilman Flainer. The artists, the downtown merchants and residents, media, public relations, which would be advertising trade, contest winners, things like that, sponsorships, vendors. The vendors would have tickets for themselves, and I guess whoever, and then volunteers that work during the festival, or some of the other groups. So that, those are the categories that they're giving those to, so...
What's the ticket price, it's forty bucks roughly?
Depends on if it's a day or the weekend.
Yeah, the day.
If you get the weekend pass, it's like seventy-five, eighty bucks.
Well, they're getting the weekend pass, so multiply that.
Well, yeah, the earlier you find, the cheaper it is.
I mean, it's more free money, it's just free money.
Even if you give away three thousand tickets to all the vendors, and there's not that many vendors down there, you can count, they're in the hundreds, right, they're not in the thousands.
Oh, that's...
And of course, they're not all utilized.
Six hundred vendors, right? Forty-seven hundred sponsors, okay, well, how many sponsors? I mean, is that ten sponsors got forty-seven hundred tickets? Is that fifteen sponsors got forty-seven hundred tickets? You know, that could be out of control, forty-seven hundred tickets to just the sponsors.
It's just money they don't get to sell a ticket for, it doesn't cost the city or anybody else any money.
It depends on how you look at it, Ms. Trevor, I mean, realistically...
Well, what it does is create a crowd. You know, if you go to a festival and there's ten people there, then the people that pay, obviously, are thinking, "What's this all about?"
If I went to Grateful Dead conference, you know, concert years ago, I don't think that anybody ever gave free tickets to the dead just to jazz up a crowd. So Bristol, Virginia is having to say, "We have all this stuff to jazz up a crowd, it's still free money, it's taxpayer money, and you can say that it didn't cost us anything." Well, why are we giving them twenty thousand dollars? It, it's costing something. And, you know, they are not entitled, as an organization, to spend taxpayers' money on tickets for these people free, period. They're, they're not.
Basically, we've been after them to raise their ticket prices, which they finally have done, to offset the need for this money.
Doesn't affect, doesn't affect the ones that get free tickets, they hope that they've raised the tickets up to a hundred, two hundred dollars. It doesn't matter, they're gonna still get their free tickets.
You need people to clean up, you need people to set up, that's where the city's in-kind, as you were talking about earlier. That's where they, they get their money, that's why they give them the ticket.
Yeah, go look at some of these volunteers that are getting these free tickets and have, and so forth and so on. And the only thing they've done is they put their chair in front of a platform and get a beer, and that's what they do, okay? But they get their free tickets. Now, okay, that's, you know, you can agree, there's probably ten volunteers that really work hard. But I guarantee you that there's a hundred on this sheet that the only thing they do, and they can't wait, they get their name out there, and they're, you know, emeritus, I just wanted to say, emeritus, Rhythm and Roots emeritus member. And I would be surprised that he's ever hit a lick at any Rhythm and Roots thing, okay? And, you know, so, bottom line, if, if you think, when it comes time to voting on this particular amount of money, if you think it's okay that an organization that we give twenty thousand dollars to, and the budget problems we have, and they keep getting it, even though they give thirteen thousand tickets away, you know, it's all right, then, well, two of them weren't used, because they sit in the back of my car. That's where they are, you know, council here doesn't need them, but they're in the back of my car. Okay, 'cause I think it's unfair that any city councilman here, who, by the way, we are volunteers, although sitting here Saturday all day makes me think I'm a volunteer. volunteers, although sitting here Saturday all day makes me think I'm a volunteer, you know, but we need to take a look at that.
I've always been in favor of cutting it because of the very fact they can raise the price of the tickets two to three bucks, and that eliminates both of us having to give them twenty grand.
Well, I agree.
Yeah. I think they've done that this year, and I don't see that we need to give it.
I agree, I agree, I agree with that.
Well, so you're thinking we need to take twenty thousand?
Cut to twenty thousand, now, maybe cut to ten this year and eliminate it totally next year.
I would urge against completely eliminating it, because, again, knowing what, how nonprofits leverage local money, a lot of the grants they apply for, they're going to want to see, does the cities give you, and granted, we do give quite a bit of in-con services, but they want to see actual cash, even, you know, it may not necessarily have to be at, at that level, but I think they are going to want to see some cash. And I think the sponsors are going to want to see some cash. I mean, there was an event about the arts at the museum, and I think you were there, Councilman Wingard, and Steve Smith was talking about that, and he said, "For Food City, when they look at, at what they donate to, they look, do the localities give to this?" And he says, "If they don't, that raises a red flag of, why should my company give if the locality isn't?" So, you know, I think to just completely eliminate them would, would, would hurt their efforts to raise additional money through grants and sponsorships and things like that.
So, you're basically saying if we don't give money, or we, we don't, we at least give something, we'll save them, but if we cut them off, that they basically would die on the vine?
Well, no, I'm not saying it would die on the vine, I think that, that it would, it would make it harder, well, I mean, that, any nonprofit, that's going to be a significant, they've got to make it up somewhere. You know, they've already set the ticket price for this year, you know, they'd either have to raise it through sponsorships or other things. What, what I'm saying, though, is that, that we do get a value back out of that to the city. We have people that come here out of town and stay in the hotels, they, they eat in our restaurants, so we see that back in, in taxes. Now, that we also do provide an extremely large amount of in-con service, but I think, you know, to, if, if we wanted to, to help them, I think some amount, I, I would not completely eliminate them, no.
All right. My opinion on this, non-mandated, you know, we're in a position where we're going to lose city staff. And with that being said right there, I don't see how this council can justify coming up with a budget that is going to lose jobs inside the city, possibly shut a firehouse, fire station down, and then turn right around and give the people's money away to other locale, other organizations. I've got major issues with that, I understand what you're talking about, Mr. Hartley, but, you know, when we all go through the good times, we all share. Now, it's the bad times, and everybody needs to step up to the plate and suck it up. We have been overpaying the chamber for decades. There is no way that we should have ever been paying them a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars every year. If you do the math between the Tennessee side and the Virginia side, it equates to roughly six dollars and fifty cents a head, which means we should have been paying them a hundred and seven thousand dollars a year to be on the same playing field as the Tennessee side, and for decades, we have overpaid them almost sixty-eight thousand dollars annually, along with everything else we do to contribute to them. So, to ask these non-mandated, for one year, to function without our, our funds, I don't think it's going to cripple them and destroy them. They, they all, the, the Chamber of Commerce, every business out there that's a member, pays their dues, and they will survive.
Well, the, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, I think it would, because when you, they came and presented, and their source of funds is, is roughly a third from the city of Bristol, Virginia, a third from the city of Bristol, Tennessee, and then they leverage that and get grants from the states of, of Virginia and Tennessee tourism. And so, you know, unlike, you can make the argument Rhythm and Roots could raise their ticket price, they don't have a ticket price to raise there. And the other thing is, I think that that would severely, maybe not right away, but I think over time, that would have a detrimental effect on our mills and logic.
I'm in favor of a one-year, non-mandated, one-year, we do not fund them, we look at it again the next budget cycle, see how much brick and mortar is actually going up at the falls, not just say-so, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. We need to see it coming, and see it built, and then we can take another look at this a year from now. But this fiscal budget year, I'm in favor of this hundred, this two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars staying in our coffer to use for the debt that's coming, because the day of borrowing money to borrow money, we have got to get past that, we've got to be able to put some money on the table to refinance these bonds. And as far as, you know, celebrate Bristol the Fourth of July, I mean, I was really impressed with, with, with that proposal when they came before us. I have no doubt, you know, they can raise the money, I mean, I would be willing to contribute to that right there, you know?
I think every one of our city councilmen, Mr. Wingard, should give, should be the one ponying up that.
Government should not pay for everything. If the community wants something to stand and be a viable part in that community, then the community itself needs to step in and support it, not rely on government. We are in charge of the people's money, and I have had multiple phone calls and people stopping me, "We've got to quit giving our money away." So, I'm just telling you right now, I'm not going to be in favor of giving the people's money away when we're laying off firemen, we're closing down a station, we've got a school superintendent saying he's not going to hire three and a half positions because he wants to contribute to the budget. So, therefore, that two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, in my opinion, needs to stay in the city budget.
But we're not laying off firemen to balance the budget.
I understand that, but now we're at a point where we've got to start getting ready for the debt.
But, but, and, and that's, you know, where, so all this money would go back-
And reserve.
We wouldn't spend it, we wouldn't spend it. Where is our rainy day fund? It is pouring out there.
Here's what I say, Mr. Wingard, and let me say this to the mayor. Look, here's what I think, Ms. Crowder, and Ms. CFO, please, the proposal here is, when we have a budget, from what I understand from Mr. Wingard, I haven't heard from Mr. Mumpire, is our position is, cut it off that's non-mandated.
If it's non-mandated, I'm-
Cut it off, at least for a year, put a moratorium out. So, we can debate this, we can bring, the promenade deck can come in here more, and we can just have more people at the public area, and I call it the promenade deck, I feel like we're somewhere on a cruise ship when everybody comes in here and we have to listen to some actor, but I think we're going to, you know, here's, that's a problem, though, I have, if we cut it, what are we going to do with the money if we cut it? We're not going to spend it, folks. We're going to give it to our kids, we're going to put it back into their futures. If we don't spend it, it goes back to the future.
It goes toward the bond refinancing, kind of like twenty-twenty.
It's going to cost us millions of dollars to refinance those bonds, millions.
So, I'm asking, I guess I've never been to a budget session, Mr. Wingard, that's what I'm trying to find out. I want to put the proposal there with that cut, that, that line item, that, those line items for those things, and so forth, and the fifty thousand for BMC, whatever that thing is, that thing, the museum, fifty thousand, because, I will say that much, because Mr. Hubbard did say, apparently, we only have fifty thousand obligation. I hate to be obligated for anything that a city council in two thousand and eleven on my, well, some, one of them was pretty good. Two thousand and twelve forward, anything they did is just a disaster, but I want fifty thousand, I'm asking for fifty thousand for BCM, that cuts our ties with them completely, completely, and nothing for Rhythm and Roots, Believe in Bristol, uh, am I forgetting anything? Oh, yeah, Convention and Business Bureau, the hundred and seventy-five thousand. So, we're talking one hundred and ninety-five, two fifteen, and that may save some jobs in this city, potentially too, but I'm saying that needs to be, at least, we'll debate it when it comes time to budget, instead of just arbitrarily sitting up here and saying, "No, no, no, no." We'll set, we'll have an up and down on that budget with that included, that cut, cut. And I'm sure we'll have flak and we'll get politics, but so be it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Anything else?
Well, I mean, I could tell you where I'm at on it, if you want to know.
Well, if you want, because e- either tonight or Thursday, we're going, this is what we're going to work-
Thursday, we got to finalize.
We've got to get all this finalized with, with all of these items, so-
These items here from the Southwest Virginia Emergency Medical, all the way down to the Chamber of Commerce Bristol Resource Center, which adds up to two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand for fifty, right?
Yep.
Uh, but, Keep Bristol Beautiful, isn't that a pass-through?
Uh-
It's a pass-through grant that we get for later.
It's a grant, we can just pass it through as an agency, so it's not costing any money.
The fifty-six-ninety-nine line?
The sixty-five-hundred-dollar.
Yeah, sixty-five-hundred on line fifty-nine, fifty-six-ninety-nine. That's pass-through, so it should be down at the bottom, or below that.
Do what?
It should be below that, through, at pass-throughs.
See, it's showing on mine, it's non-mandated.
Well, it's, it's a grant that comes to the city, and the, in the past, the city has chosen to give it to keep Bristol beautiful, that's why we don't list it as a pass-through.
Did you, did you hear that?
Say that again?
It's, it's a grant that the city has the opportunity to apply for, and in the past, we have allowed KBB to do that. That's why we didn't put it in the pass-through, because it's not-
So, it's state money?
Right.
Okay. So, that sixty-five-hundred dollar can go down at, through the pass-through?
Yes, it can.
Okay. Well, that's still two-fourteen.
I'm for that.
Cut it off. Rip it and rip it.
Councilman Mumpire, just to finish her, is that, is that what you were going to finish with?
Uh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not on board yet with cutting it all, but I'm on board with cutting a substantial amount, because we're not, we're not going to leave these uncut. I mean, we're cutting some departments here twenty to thirty percent, so these cuts are going to be at least twenty to thirty percent, if not more, right? So, I think the Rhythm and Roots and the Believe in Bristol has shown that they can stand on their own two feet, and those go, if not to zero, down to five or six thousand dollars, something really low, if the perception of not funding them is what the mayor said, and there, there are some answerly kind of negatives if you're not careful, so I would say the twenty grand goes to five, the thirty-five thousand goes to eight, right?
Seventeen.
The one-seventy-five for the Chamber of Commerce goes to one-twenty-five, fifty-thousand-dollar reduction.
You're still proposing more-
And I'm not, hang on, I am not a proponent of completely cutting out the advertisement that needs to be done for the city, so the expectations are, the chamber will come to us with how they're going to spend that one-twenty-five, it's going to be very specific, and very targeted, and very spot-on, so that we try to generate revenues out of that one-twenty-five, because that's plenty of money, right? It's ten thousand dollars a month, right? But it's got to be spent properly, so that we create, so we give it one year to show, if you do proper advertising and you have targeted expenditures, what you get out of it, so that money's got to be targeted and spent right, and then a year later, we reconcile what we got out of that. And then, it goes down really substantially if we got no value out of it. So, I'm not saying it needs to go to zero, because we've not set that target yet to, to properly advertise the city, and that needs to be done, because we're, in my opinion, we're kind of giving it, you know, a rough shot approach, right? We're not really doing targeted promotion of this city, and that's what that money's for. You know, that money's for a website, that money's for apps, that money's for people coming down the highway, when they look where to go, that it drives them to City of Bristol, Virginia. Billboards that light up on the interstate to drive them in here, that's what that money's for. It's not for a picnic, or a, you know, a conference.
They're not using it for that.
You know, it's not for putting a Battle of Bristol sign out on the corner of Commonwealth, right? That's, that's after you're already here, right?
Food City paid for that.
Well, they ever paid for it. They piggybacked on the back of that, they piggybacked.
But my point is, the money has got to be spent to drive people here, right? And we got to make sure we give them the opportunity to do that, and they come back and prove it to us, that they're now doing it. So, it does need to be cut.
You're not setting stone, are you, Mr. Mumpire, though, on a hundred and a quarter for the chamber, at this point? You're saying that that's where you're looking at, but we can debate that again?
Oh, yeah, you can debate it, I would take it down to at least a hundred and twenty-five.
Okay, okay, okay.
Maybe a hundred. But there's got to be some money in there every month that we're targeting advertisement for the city.
Okay.
And then a year later, if it doesn't get us anything, then, you know, it's, it's, we don't, we don't know how to advertise, you know, we, we don't know how to do that kind of work.
Well, if we went one year without them-
We'd know.
And we looked at our books, and then next year, we would know how much they're benefiting us.
But what if that, what if that approach of knocking it to zero actually knocks out eight hundred thousand dollars of lodging revenues that you can't predict right now?
I understand, I understand.
That's, that's, that's the dilemma of that, right? That's, that's the risk of that.
But I don't, I don't believe we're getting the service for the money.
Hey, no debate there, I mean, I'm, I'm skeptical too, I mean, you've heard, you've heard the, you've heard the presentations, you know, it's, it's not a targeted approach, right, of how to, how to advertise this city.
I think it's an elitist organization, typically, I think it is, I mean, you know, it's supposed to be for business and so forth, that, and organizations, businesses contribute and so forth, socialize and so forth, you know, I, I like where you're coming from, Mr. Wingard, I think that is, it's, it's a real drastic approach, I guess, to say nothing and see what we got. I've always said, if you drive down the interstate and you need to stop, hotel, you're going to go off and find a motel. I mean, you know, if you're going to, if you're hungry and you're driving down the interstate, you're going to come off and eat. If you're going to go to the race, you're going to get off, you're going to make rent plans to stay somewhere. And Chamber of Commerce Visitors, Convention and Business Bureau had done a darn thing to make it change anything since nineteen sixty-something, when the racetrack went down there. So, you know, we can have proponents that are oligarchs, elitist, and so forth and so on, and they can propose that we, you know, "Oh, my God, the sky will fall if we don't do this." And I, on the other hand, I believe that the sky will not fall, and nothing's going to change, so we'll debate how drastic the cuts will be on Thursday night.
Well, I just will say that advertising is always impossible to truly track on a large scale. It's always been a case of, should we advertise at all, or just a little bit, or how much is too much? So, playing around with it, maybe cutting a little bit and see how that goes, but rather than cutting it all out, because if it turns out advertising truly is valuable, we could end up losing money more than we're talking about cutting, is what I'm saying.
Well, if we start going desperate, we can always put it back in and so forth and so on, I mean, if we find out, "Oh, my God, come, you know-"
Well, you don't know that until the years are-
September, October, well, okay, so December, "Oh, my God," and December, we go and we're not getting any tourism just coming in here, and, "Oh, my God, we let the BCV, whatever, Bristol Convention Bureau, go, 'Oh, my God, we've got to start advertising, maybe we can run, get them to do something for us and so forth at that point in time.'" But when you say small cuts, you know, I, I, it's, I'm looking at least, at least a third to fifty percent at a minimum for them.
I would say you can't wait a year to wake up and understand that number.
Exactly.
We saw, we're not getting any revenue projections out of the Revenue Office. Come November, I'm sure that's going to change in a big way, and I'm going to make sure I'm part of that change, because we're going to get somebody in that Commission of Revenue Office that can help us project revenues. But in the meantime, that lady sitting right there in the CFO's chair, right, has got to look at how she can project revenues as best she can, to the accuracy she can, to tell us, "How are we tracking?", right? So, if we are seeing a decline in those sales tax and lodging tax things, and, and we have to regroup and say, "What the heck is going on here?", and understand that, and dig into that, and then if we have to throw more advertising money at that to reverse that, we can't wait till December to see that, we got to understand that in August and September and do something about it, right? That's a whole different mode of operation, but we've got to do that next year, we can't-
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, cutting it totally out is too big a gamble.
To cut it now and bring it back is a valid approach, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Because whatever we save in this budgeting process, because we're going to have a balanced budget, is going to go over in a reserve fund, it's going to be pulled back on the, on the real estate tax side, right? So, the citizens aren't having to pay as much tax. So, we're going to have some extra cash going in there that we can deal with some of these small items as we see a trend that's, that's problematic, and she's going to have to look at it to say, "We've got a problematic trend here," and make sure we're on top of it, and address it quickly, right? So, and so then below that, the Country Music Museum, I think, at this point, I would take them all the way down to twenty-five thousand dollars, and, and say, okay, this is, you know, this is the last, you know, this is it. Uh, we're looking for you to turn Commonwealth Extension Avenue into something special, and you got a grant, and now it's time to execute, right?
They didn't, they didn't get the grant.
It's, it's rolling, it's rolling. Oh, they didn't get the grant?
No.
Okay, well, we approved it, so, you know, you gotta do what you gotta do in a different way to turn that side of the, you know, city into something special, right? And they've gotta do a different approach.
If they don't want twenty-five.
They got a hotel going in next door, and if you go down there right now on Commonwealth Avenue, it's like the sidewalks are rolled up, right? Seriously, it's like the sidewalks are rolled up, that's not the way you get activity down there, you know, so we've got to do something to get the message that there's gonna be a little bit of money there, but again, it better be, it better be targeted and it better bring value, so the hundred thousand has gotta come down. Somebody said fifty, you know, I say seventy-five, but it's gotta come down a substantial amount.
You're talking about which one, man?
The, uh, one item where it says Bristol Country Music Association and the.
A hundred grand.
A hundred grand, yep.
I thought you said twenty-five, I'm for twenty-five.
Take it down to twenty-five.
Well, I'm just saying the.
Take it down to twenty-five, take it down to twenty-five?
The honor is the obligation of five hundred, we only need to pay fifty.
Yeah, that's what I thought, you jacked him up, he said we can get it.
Right, no words, they promised five hundred thousand, but then before they left office, they gave them another fifty thousand.
Yeah, and you said take it down to fifty.
But that. So, take it to fifty, that gets us to five hundred thousand.
But I think that fifty thousand was for the work on, well, for the work on the annex, this was part of the work on the, the, the building that was good.
Well, I mean, that was part of the museum.
But, but I think that the point is, they made that five hundred thousand dollar commitment that leveraged money from Tennessee, Bristol, and the Tennessee, the city and the state.
But the real point is, they made a promise on a fifty-two million dollar debt that we've gotta deal with, that we need to focus on, not fifty thousand or a hundred thousand remaining commitment, it's millions we need to focus on.
Yeah, we're way past in this, in this budget cycle, we're way past worrying about just balancing the budget. We gotta not just balance the budget, we gotta take the cost to the other side of the page, so that we are putting the reserve funds and building that up, so we're positioning ourselves to have the funds and cash flow necessary to pay those bills and those obligation bonds and those financing fees going forward, and if we are, if we don't do that, then shame on us.
We've got to do it.
You know, shame on us, we don't know what we're doing, because that right there is in front of you in twelve to fifteen months, and it ain't going away, that train's on the track, and it's running.
Be here next week. Twenty-twenty comes, you'll say, where did the time go?
Yeah, I hope I'm not wrong.
So, yeah, all this money we're talking about right now, and I think we're all on the same page, so, well, as far as what to do with whatever we save, not, not the amounts, but just whatever is saved is going in the reserve.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we got the budget basically balanced.
So it's all going in the reserves, and then we'll debate how much we need to pull the real estate tax down, because we've got whatever money we've got, so we'll have to look at that and decide where we take that, because the citizens need some relief now.
We got that, one-seventeen.
Yeah. Well, maybe more than that, maybe that, we gotta debate if one-seventeen's the right number, maybe one-fifteen's the right number, or one-fourteen, so.
Well, then you're eating into the reserve.
But we gotta see what the to, well, we gotta see what this total number is, we're not done with this, right? She's gotta roll this up and tell us what this final number is.
And we, Mr. Hubbard, we have to remember our demographics. We've got an average minimum household income of two people, two people of thirty-three thousand dollars a year. If we can take our real estate taxes back down to a, a level that is sustainable for them, that is what we need to do.
And actually, if we save some money also, we're, we're not spending the money, we can perhaps do some urban renewal inside this city in some of our blighted areas, and use that and so forth and so on, and, and so forth, so there's, there's, there's avenues we can explore, but spending on frivolous things is not one of the things that we're in a position to do anymore, and, uh, it sounds great, but, you know, it, it's, it's not, it's just not reasonable under the circumstances.
So City Manager can put fifty thousand in there, whatever, she, she's heard the discussion, so.
Well, Thursday, we make the final decision. We're just getting, gathering information and discussing at this point.
Well, they could flip it.
But in, in terms of updating, I've, I've heard, the middle of the road seems to be coming from Councilman Mumpower at this point on this, and so we'll put those numbers in for Thursday, just so you have a total.
So you're gonna use the one-twenty-five for the Chamber Convention Bureau?
The one-twenty-five, the five, the five.
Five for the Rhythm and Roots, eight for Believe in Bristol.
Right, and I was gonna ask, we didn't talk about Southwest Virginia Emergency Medical Council and Celebrate Bristol, Celebrate Bristol Fourth of July.
I think this council ought to make up to Celebrate Bristol. I really do, I think we owe it to the citizens, instead of taking it out of the budget here in this city, I think we ought to pony up five hundred a base. That's my opinion, if somebody don't wanna do it, I'll pony up theirs, not that I'm a rich man, but I mean realistically, you know.
Which one is that one?
The Fourth of July.
I mean, realistically, I mean, we, we, here's the thing, Ms. Crowder, but also, I want you to pencil in both sides, I know you're talking about the middle of the road, but I think Mr. Mumpower's hundred-and-twenty-five for the chamber, unless some people up here really get lit up, and, you know, somebody twists our arms, I don't think it's gonna hold at a hundred and a quarter, I don't think Rhythm and Roots is gonna hold at five, I don't think Believe in Bristol's gonna hold at five. I, uh, I, I think BCM may stay at fifty, uh, but, uh, so I think you need to start.
Okay, so do you, oh.
I'm hearing several different things, and what council needs to remember, if we're gonna stay on a timeline so that we can have the ordinance in and have the budget passed, you all are discussing things right now, and it sounds like you wanna discuss more Thursday, but unless we have hard numbers Thursday night, we're gonna be in an extreme time crunch, uh, come end of June, in order to get this budget read and passed, so, I mean, I think the discussion's great, but.
Well, here's where you got, you got two that are gonna give nothing, that's Mr. Wingard and myself, you've got Mr. Mr. Mumpower, who's right now prepared to give a hundred and a quarter to, but he said he's willing to come off of that potentially on.
I understand that, we need to know what number, I mean, because we're at a point right now where timing is of the essence.
I appreciate that, we, we need to figure this out, what we're gonna do.
Right now?
I mean, it's not something, if you push it on to Thursday, there's still gonna be more discussion, I mean, I'm not trying to take away from council right now, but you gotta understand, June thirtieth is their deadline, and we have to be prepared to pass this budget by June thirtieth, and if we don't have the budget ordinance in place so that it can, we can have the public meeting on the May thirtieth, we are in a very difficult timeline to get this passed by June thirtieth.
Thank you for reminding us of that, we needed that reminder.
Seventy-five, seventy-five?
Seventy-five, a hundred and five.
Let's do seventy-five thousand on the chamber, on the chamber.
I'm not voting for any.
I'm trying to get us out of here.
Mandatory money.
Non-mandatory?
No.
I wouldn't either, Kevin, but to get us out of here, Mr. Wingard, I.
Well, it needs three votes, but I'm a zero on this, I'm, I'm not gonna give the people's money away when we're laying people off.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, I wouldn't give Rhythm and Roots a penny.
Three of y'all four that did that.
I think there's a match involved in that Convention Bureau's money to get money drawdown from the states.
Yeah.
We just have to find out what that number is, I think it's a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I'll go with you, Mr. Wingard, I'll stick, I'll, I'll stay fat, it's, it'd be three to two, I just, you know, bottom line is, we need to at least get a number from Mr. Mumpower, what they can live with.
So it's whatever they agree on.
Well, I'm, I, I agree with what you're saying, I mean, I, I was trying to compromise here for a change, but bottom line is, we don't need in this day and time to be giving a penny to any of these people out here for nothing, zero. 'Cause I guarantee you, they don't give anything to us, I haven't seen it, so I'm gonna vote no for anything for the non-mandated, along with you, Mr. Wingard.
Well, these, these organizations bring in money to the city in the form of tourism, and that's hotel taxes.
So they say, you know, it runs right through our back doors.
Yeah, yeah.
They put the objection up here to the chamber.
The fact that the people are on the street during these events means they're gonna eat somewhere.
Well, they, they, they.
And if you don't have the event, they're not here.
They can afford to eat, they get the free tickets, they get the free tickets to the event, so they can afford to eat downtown, I mean, you know.
That's still money for the city, the tickets don't bring money to the city, if they.
No, they sure don't.
If they sold them for a thousand dollars a piece, city wouldn't get any of that money.
Well, we're paying for them, so whatever they sell for, it's free to them.
All I'm trying to point out is, is you get crowds into town, they spend money.
What if we did this, that's a different approach, now, when we, you know, the business world, you, you, you get to the point where you've gotta cut and lay, lay off people, but you're very careful about what you cut at the top advertising line, and what you do to take care of the customers, or it comes back as a negative impact on your financials, so. You could say it's zero, but they have to come back within thirty days of the approved budget, with a targeted request of how they're gonna advertise the City of Bristol to grow sales and lodging tax, and then we approve it incrementally as we go through the year. So it holds them accountable to come in here and say, here's what we wanna do in the month of August, right, to promote whatever, and we need this amount of money to do that, and they'd show us how and why, and then we agree or we disagree to give them that money to do that. And so it's kinda, you get paid as you go.
In other words, you're saying it's set aside, basically, you would set aside X dollars in a contingency fund and allow the, the Convention and Business Bureau to come in and vote no on nothing else, on all the rest of the stuff, nothing?
No, I'm not.
No. Well, that's the way you do in the business world, you, you say, okay, we have to do a certain amount of advertising, so you set aside some kinda money, but then when you get into the details of where you're gonna spend that money, you deal with it one project at a time. You don't just give the department fifty grand or seventy-five grand to do with, do with it the way they wanna do with it. But when they, when they get their numbers together and they get their plan together, they come back and say, we need twelve thousand for this right here, and here's what we're gonna get out of it. And then you decide whether it's worth it, and, and let them go forward, or you say, nope, not good enough, so you gotta come up with something better than that, and, um.
That doesn't make, Mr. Wingard, I know you're shaking your head, but I mean, doesn't that make sense, that we set aside seventy-five, just seventy-five? I'm not voting to give a dollar of the people's money away when we're laying off employees and shutting down.
What I'm saying is, we're not giving it away.
I understand where you're coming from.
We're gonna vote on it before we give it away.
But you're still willing to peep it on the table to give it away at a later date.
That's right, that's right.
They'll get it, they'll get it.
Because we cannot say, no advertising, no nothing for this city, I think that's, that, that's so far on the other side, and you don't know the impact to the sales tax and lodging tax, and without that knowledge, and without understanding that, right? You're gonna turn something else upside down, and you're gonna be surprised at the impact, and it happens, 'cause I've seen it happen more than once.
I understand where you're coming from, and you've got merit, you've got merit, but you need to sell it to them for.
I, uh, I actually did a study on the Rhythm and Roots by looking at the hotels before and after, and during Rhythm and Roots. I took all that money, also noticed the increase in restaurant sales, took all that money, I subtracted all the city expenses, which amounts to around ninety grand. Tennessee spends about the same amount, that's for street closings and cleanup and all that, police, to keep the crowds under control if necessary. Uh, bottom line, if we weren't paying the twenty grand, the city would actually cover their expenses. And I count, they, they say ninety thousand dollars doesn't count as cash, I call it cash, we paid our workers.
Mr. Hubbard, here's the only thing I will say, and this is the only thing, Mr. Wingard, first of all, I agree with you one hundred percent in principle, and I'm with you, but I want to move this, we got a budget Thursday night. Okay? And it, and I hate like the devil, I like Mr. Mumpower's approach to cap it, it's like fifty or seventy-five thousand to, for a surplus for the Bristol Convention Bureau, nothing for Rhythm and Roots is my position, nothing for Rhythm and Roots, nothing for Believe in Bristol. You know, I hate to give the chain, the BCM a penny, you know, I, that, it's just stupid to start with, but, I mean, I'm prepared to vote to put fifty to seventy-five thousand into a fund, into a, into a, a reserve fund, and have Convention Bureau, Visitors Bureau come in and say, this is what we asking the money for, no more than seventy-five thousand dollars, and not giving them to them straight up. They have to come in and ask for it, that would be my proposal.
So that two-twenty four-fifty saves us a hundred and forty-five thousand with that approach.
And it may save us more, it may save us whole thing.
That two-twenty adds all that up, so if we take that down to seventy-five and those to zero, that's, that's a savings of a hundred and forty-five thousand.
And we may still save it all, we may save it all, they're having to come to us, we're not gonna say, here's your check, July one, of seventy-five thousand dollars, go do with as you please, is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, in fact, that's the way it should be done anyway, you shouldn't give any of these organizations just money, right? You should set aside a certain amount, and then make them come in here and say what they, you know, their request as the year folds out, and you either agree to give them the cash to cover that project, or you don't.
I, I disagree with that, I, you fund the organization, they, they submit a, a proposal, they explain to you what they're gonna do, we've read that, and you fund them based on that, it's, it would be the same as, as you would do with any, 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 uh, any granting agency, a foundation, a sponsorship, you say, here's the proposal, and you, and you ask to be funded for the time period, and you don't come back and say, fund this, fund that, fund that. You, you can approve the request or deny it, but to me, to have them come back on a monthly basis before we disburse a check, or, or on a per-project basis, when they're trying to leverage money, uh, you know, they may need the money that we've got to know that it's committed before they can apply to the state and get two times the money to actually do the project, because the seventy-five thousand isn't, but that's putting us at, at a, at a level that I don't think as a council we should be at, that, that we should not be micromanaging.
I disagree, we're in a position today that we have to micromanage this city. When you get a city, or any organization, to the financial brink of where we are, you, you know what you have to do? You have to micromanage where every penny goes, and then, when you're in the healthy zone and you're financially stable, then you can start letting the reins go, when departments and organizations start to prove they know now how to manage themselves and how to manage every dollar. Right now, I'm telling you, there's not a single department in here I'm impressed with. Some are trying, there's not a single organization that really understands what that means, right? Y'all remember my comment, when you get in financial trouble, you better know how to burn the furniture, right? Nobody in here knows how to burn the furniture, they don't even know what that means. That means if you gotta burn the furniture to keep yourself warm because you can't afford the heat, that's what you do. So, yeah, you have to micromanage, Mayor, you don't wanna do that, no manager likes to micromanage, but you have to when you get in the situation we're in, because every dollar counts.
The tail's been wagging a dog in this city for too long, instead of the other way around, quite frankly. And, Mr. Mumpower, if, if, if the mayor won't compromise with that, I'd suggest you say, we just go to zero. Mr. Wingard and I would be there, but, I mean, realistically, if he's not willing to at least compromise with that, then there's no use us beating around, around the bush and so forth and so on.
Well, let's, let's get, make sure that these cuts that you're proposing are not gonna affect drawdowns from the states on tourism dollars and what have you.
Ms. Crowder, do you not know the answer to that question tonight?
I think there's a hundred thousand dollar match if there is a hundred thousand dollar contribution from the local.
Do you not, I mean, that should be something that we should, they've been doing it every year, you've been City Manager for two, three, I mean, isn't that something?
They do use this money to leverage state grants, I'm not aware of, right this moment, I'll look back at their presentation of what the plan for that is next year, but yes, they have in the last two years used this money to leverage against state money for grants.
Leveraging, but that's not the same as it's matched.
No, that's the same term, that's the same terminology.
Well, in other words, they get taxpayer money from two different sources, they get it from the state level, and they get it from the city local government level.
For the states to give away taxpayer money, they gotta have local taxpayer money to match.
Yeah, for a five oh one C three.
What that number is.
Yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense. Just give more welfare away. That's corporate welfare, that's the only difference.
I'm not sure where that leaves us, I'm just kinda waiting to see where these two over here end up.
Well, I mean.
Well, for instance, Fourth of July, that's, it costs ten grand just for the fireworks, so they, they actually raise money, that's vice.
I understand, I understand that.
It does, and so they raised quite a bit of contributions for that period.
Well, I don't think we're gonna argue about Fourth of July, I mean, one way or the other, we'll, we'll get that, the twenty-five hundred, we'll get it, if we have to do it ourself, I mean, I know it'd kill you to spend money, but, you know, but individually, but, uh, you know, bottom line is, we'll get that, we're talking about the big money. And, you know, on the table right now, Mr. Hubbard, except for Celebrate Fourth of July, whatever, what's on the table right now is a seventy-five thousand dollar fund that is not gonna be written check, July one, two thousand seventeen, to the Chamber of Commerce Visitor and Convention Bureau, okay? And it's gonna be kept, and they say they want X, they come here, they prepare a month in advance, or two weeks in advance, and they come here with a presentation, and they tell us what they need, that's what's on the table, if that's pooh-pooh, then I suggest to Mr. Mumpower, that he go with Mr. Wingard and I, we just basically say zero all the way across the board, except for Celebrate Fourth of July, Celebrate Bristol Fourth of July, that's, that's what I meant, right?
I don't think... I'm out on this, but I am gonna say this one more comment. To Celebrate Fourth of July is twenty-five hundred dollars. That's something I feel like the community needs and would support, so if they can't raise the money, all they have to do is call me.
Okay. And I'll split with you.
And they'll get the money. But the rest of it, I'm out on.
Counsel, could I make a suggestion real quick? Take a brief recess and...
Yes.
All right, take a recess. All right, if everybody take their seat or go ahead. A couple of things to keep in mind with this discussion, particularly with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, that I think if the city manager can look up, is there, with the mills and lodging tax, there is a percentage of that that needs to go back towards promotion of tourism, you know, and with the either state statute or ordinance that allows that. And I know she's trying to get that information, but as she does, I think she can share that with us.
Mr. Mayor, let me tell you, Mr. Pollard's already on top of it. There is no set percentage.
I agree with that.
There's no set percentage.
It's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation. Right now, it's around fifteen to sixteen percent. That is way too high.
But you have to apply a percent.
Yeah, we need to have some kind of percent.
About five works.
Okay.
Whatever.
About five works. Whatever five percent of that would be, I think is the reason.
No, no, don't so...
We have to. On that.
We have to protect the ability to charge it around tax.
You're giving them now. Because our lodging tax is nine percent. You take five percent and nine percent.
We'll just have to see what percentage it needs to be, but that's just a...
That's fair enough. I see what you're saying. In other words, whatever, I'm proposing, if five percent comes out about seventy-five thousand dollars, and we escrow those monies and so forth and so on, not just arbitrarily give it, you know, one lump sum, if five percent comes out to about that, I'm good with that. If it's more than seventy-five thousand, I'm not good with it. In fact, I'd take it down to one if we have to, if it gets us to where we need to be.
Well, we need to find out legally where the good place to be is. If they'll accept one, that's fine. If they won't, we'll have to do something else, but we got another day to figure it out.
So does the city manager understand what to do?
I do. I mean, I concur, based on, when we've talked about this before, there is no set amount. We'll take a look and confirm that.
If there's no set amount, but then in order for you to charge a certain percent on the mill and lodging tax, you have to establish a percent of that to go back to tourism.
To go back to tourism, and right now, C V B is the tourism entity that we have. The city does not have a tourism person.
So we as a council have to establish a percent.
Okay.
And right now, it's about sixteen percent.
And right now, it's about fifteen.
But you gotta spend it, you can't, if what you're proposing, as you go along, you get more, if you don't spend that money, then you're in violation of your...
So we can't escrow that money at all and just give out?
No, we just have to give it out, and that's all part of doing business.
I don't see the sixteen percent.
That was a number I was just giving a minute ago. That's a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
If I had the item in lodging taxes and restaurant meals taxes, that totals over six point four two five million dollars, and we're only given a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
The meals tax and the motel tax and all that stuff is six point four million dollars of revenue in the city?
Yes, it is. That's what I'm saying. This has a huge ripple effect. I mean, you know, you look on the first page of the draft budget, Mr. Flinder, right there, twelve oh one oh, twelve oh one oh dash oh oh ten and oh oh eleven, a million two budgeted for, a million two two five budgeted for lodging, which is down twenty-five thousand, and five point two million for restaurant meals, which is down five hundred and forty-five thousand. So you add those together, that's six point four two five, and I calculated that to be two point seven percent, the hundred and seventy-five thousand. And, you know, again, that's, you were saying a minute ago, five, that would actually be increasing what we're giving to them.
I don't think that's the way it works. I think it's just the lodging only, it's one point two million, fifteen percent of one point two million on lodging is your hundred and seventy-five thousand number, and that's what she needs to confirm.
And we have their presentation from the last time they presented, and they used the lodging tax collected number as the same number we had for the actual amount in fifteen sixteen, which was one million one hundred and seventy-eight thousand. You all see that on the first page. And you are correct, Councilman Mumpower, with an allocation of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, that's fifteen percent.
Okay. From the lodging tax, not the mills?
From lodging.
Just lodging.
This is all on transient occupancy tax.
Okay. So if we took it down to five, what would it be? Sixty?
Seventy-five thousand would be six percent. Six point three percent would be seventy-five thousand dollars of the one one eight six.
Well, I recommend y'all commit to a dollar amount, not a percentage.
I use one one eight six as the number. Is that right? If you multiply one, one point one eight six million times six point three percent, it comes out to seventy-five thousand dollars.
That's the best I'd give. That's the best I'd give, seventy-five thousand.
But not escrow, it's gotta be...
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. So we still have, then, I think, did Ms. Crowder, Ms. Stradlin, did y'all understand where the majority up here were on those? I think there was a consensus, or...
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
The Chamber of Commerce Convention and Visitors would be basically six point three percent of the lodging tax, that comes out to about seventy-five thousand, and everything else in that section that's colored, the tan, is zero.
Including Keep Bristol Beautiful, which is pass-through money.
Oh, with the exception of that, I'm sorry, with the pass-through money, because that's net zero anyway.
Okay. Again, all right, and then down with the eighty-one oh thirty column, those funding agreements, and the other one, that Commission for the Arts, that's pass-through money as well, although they wouldn't get that. There again, that's a good example of how giving them money, if you give an arts organization money, they can apply and receive up to five thousand dollar match from the state, just because there's local money going in, so that could be zeroed out if you zeroed the other out.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the effect would be ten grand, is that what you're saying?
That's what, yeah, it has the effect if they apply for that, so...
So we're already cutting them from sixteen, down, back down to fives, for purposes of getting another grant for five.
Well, originally, you had them down to zero. Everything was zeroed out, is my understanding, is what the consensus was, other than the C V B, and Keep Bristol Beautiful.
Okay, well, we need to verify that that is indeed the case. That may make a difference.
Well, we can check into that. Okay, and then the...
Can we just clarify the line above that?
Yes, that's where I was going back to.
Because there was some discussion about fifty, there was some discussion about twenty-five thousand with the B C M, and what the consensus is on that, just so we are clear.
Well, the mayor said that the last city council gave away fifty, so if you confirm that, that's automatic, that comes out. So that hundred turns into fifty automatic, and then the discussion is, how far down do we take the fifty?
Okay.
And I said twenty-five thousand.
I'll go twenty-five.
Is what I said. So that hundred goes down to twenty-five.
I mean, I still think we...
Well, I think it should be fifty, but that's all right. I mean, you can use twenty-five for your budget purposes, but Thursday, we'll have to decide for sure if that's, if we want you to go further, who knows? Have a night's sleep on it.
All right, and then we have the three items down there in the purple.
What's our obligation on those?
Ms. Crowder?
They're memberships, so there is no...
So we can opt out?
Yes.
I'll tell you what, I'd opt out of that Virginia Eighth Corridor, that gentleman that presented here a while back, you know, he said that they got stuff for Galax, they got stuff for Marion, I haven't heard anything even close to Abingdon, so I would, I don't think that's beneficial to the city. You know, I think we should opt out of that membership.
I believe that's what it's projected to be, zero.
Is it?
She had sixteen for away.
Free trade zone.
Oh, okay, I see, yeah.
Was eliminated.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Take it to zero.
And that's fine, certainly, if that's what you all want to do, I will tell you, he sits on the eighth, the Go Virginia Regional Council.
And the message is gonna be, when Go Virginia proves that it's got the value that we need, then we'll come back and refund it. But right now, they've tried everything under the sun, and I told Carrico and Israel Quinn, you can't just throw stuff on the wall and see what sticks. You gotta have a marketing person that understands how to do marketing, you gotta market this region like you're supposed to professionally, and then things happen. But what they've done is, well, that didn't work, so let's find something here, and that didn't work, and we're done with that. That's ridiculous. So Go Virginia is just another attempt, right? At that same, at that same strategy. And so, you know, we're putting them on record right now, whoever's on that Go Virginia board, you better make some things happen, because all the last attempts, nothing's happened.
Go Virginia is working in Northern Virginia, but it's at a dead stop in Southwest Virginia.
It stops at Marion.
All right, you're taking a vague corridor, the Go Virginia just started, hadn't started anywhere yet.
But it's a spinoff of another branch.
It's another staff, they're trying to get people to work together. Before, nobody wanted to work together, everybody wanted to do stuff for their side.
So we're at zero on that one.
So in any event, we can zero it out.
We're done with this sheet now.
Can I ask for a running tally where we are right now?
Join the crowd.
So you zeroed out a corridor, and I'd already recommended zeroing out Foreign Trade Zone, I assume you all want to do that?
Yes.
And then you've got the Chamber dues.
I don't even know what the Foreign Trade Zone is. And at Tri-City Airport, a Foreign Trade Zone?
Yeah, as long as we keep paying.
Yeah.
We're foreigners, huh?
You get to build products that go overseas or coming in from overseas, and you get to keep them down there, don't have to pay any taxes on them because you're actually using them.
And you bypass customs.
So you run down there, grab a handful, and build something, then pay the tax.
At some point, counsel, you may need to look at that, because Tri-City's Regional Airport is trying to do some development down there where they're having an airpark, basically is what they call it, which hopefully creates some high-paying jobs.
Hopefully.
Where aircraft manufacturers may come in, or other types of manufacturers that would need to utilize the airport on a daily basis.
Well, when that starts happening, and they start getting the jobs, we'll start maybe ponying up the money, but I don't think it's happening.
Have that in the back of your mind.
As I understand, we can always rejoin, we just have to make up for payments that we've missed. So in two or three years from now, if there's something fantastic going on, we pay forty-eight grand, we're back in.
Amen.
And we'll subtract that from whatever deal is on the table.
That's fed rate, too. You have to pay fed rate. You have to back up and pay?
For what you left out, you're no longer a member of the group, and so they're gonna have to start supporting our shares. It's only fair that they get paid back if you want to come back into the club. But it's no big deal. If we actually get a good business that needs it, we're gonna get more than that out of it.
It's a good investment. It'll be a good investment at that time, if it happens, you know, but, you know...
Until it happens, we don't need to spend any more of that money. I already asked them last year, would they please do it based on population? Because why should we pay the same amount as Kingsport?
Amen.
And I asked them also, does anybody use it? No. Nobody's using it. So we're paying for an empty building.
Why didn't you ask that question the year before that?
I wasn't there. I didn't know what the hell it was the year before that.
See, I didn't know. So instead of putting foreign thing, y'all just put empty building space, taped for no reason whatsoever, Ms. Crowder, maybe, you know, next year, if you ask for it.
So there's one more line. All right, and we flip over. Go to you.
We are keeping the Chamber dues.
Pay the Chamber dues.
All right.
Yeah.
I didn't know you guys were pretty mean.
CFO can't even keep up with the cubs, keep up with the cubs.
Is that amount?
I think that's it.
Didn't...
Everything else is zero.
When she was here, didn't Mr. Reinhardt say that that amount was, should be adjusted? From what?
The dues. Down, wasn't it?
No.
We'll put that in.
Yes, I think they raised dues slightly.
Yeah.
Hundred seventy-five.
Okay, and then on the back?
It's all zero.
It's all zero.
Everybody agree to that? Leave it zero?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Do you want the total?
Running total, yes.
Two hundred and thirty thousand, three fifty-eight.
Tonight?
In the, in the outside.
Okay, and we had two hundred and fifty going into? Is that about right?
I was giving you the reductions.
Just for what we did right now?
This piece of paper is two thirty-five.
Okay, okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, all right, so again, I guess you'll come back and redo all this, so we can look at it and see if we want to make any additional.
It's two thirty, not two thirty-five, because the five thousand was offset by revenue for the Commission on Arts Grant. So that's what we're seeing, two thirty. Just...
The net effect.
The net effect, yeah.
Because five's coming out of both sides.
Yes, we'll put that in for the next draft.
Okay. All right, so we'll move now to item number six, capital discussion, and that would be... This is general fund, but you gave us today some capitals.
Right, you have to look back at your old, yes.
So we had local dollars, so four hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred. You'll remember, we had the three cars at one thirty-one, one thirty-one thousand, five hundred, to, if we were to lease those, that would be a savings of around a hundred thousand, or not a savings, reduction this year of around a hundred thousand.
Of the four twenty-five would come down by a hundred? What are you talking about?
Yes.
And those three cars are police vehicles?
Police vehicles, the hundred and thirty-one.
This is the three, this is the three vehicles we're talking about.
Can you just put that back up on the overhead, the slide you're talking about? I mean, I don't know where I've got it, it's a pile of stuff.
Um, so the PowerPoint I gave with the first night with the budget, do you, can you get to that quickly?
Is it this one here?
Yes.
Or is this an older version?
That is it.
That's the old version of her, well...
Says four fifty-two, five hundred.
Four fifty-two, five, is that what it says?
Four fifty-two, five hundred.[1716.62] Four fifty-two, five hundred.
That's, that's what's still in the budget right now.
Yeah, that was the budget deficit time before we started this process.
So the cars, hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred, as I say, if we lease those, that would go down by about a hundred.
That would go down how much, Ms. Crowder?
By around a hundred thousand.
So that four fifty-two, five hundred turns into three fifty-two, five hundred?
Correct. Uh, we had seventy-eight thousand dollars in there because last year we did a three-year lease for the police software that had to be replaced. So that's a lease committed. Uh, we had put in fifteen thousand dollars to start a lease for Sheriff, the same software, because they too need to upgrade, because they had the old software that's no longer being...
How much was that, eight thousand?
Fifteen, fifteen thousand. We had eight thousand dollars local in there for a transit bus, because if you remember, that's our ten percent of the eighty thousand dollar bus. We had the tree replacements in there, twenty thousand downtown. I know that's something you all talked about, so if you want to cut that, we can cut it out as well. And then we had put in, uh, two hundred thousand for Lee Highway Phase One A. Um, we had, a few years ago, got a bond to do the flood control project and Lee Highway Phase One A. And the flood control project with the Corps has had some overruns. And we are still settling two condemnation cases on Lee Highway Phase One A. And so we had estimated another two hundred thousand for that.
And just as a side note, in case you don't realize, these capital things don't show up in the budget as an expense. It's a cash issue.
What was the transit bus again, how much?
It's eight thousand in local funds. Right now, I'm just talking to you about local funds.
And the trees were how much again?
Twenty thousand.
That was a, what, a two- or three-year plan to do twenty thousand a year?
A two-year, we did twenty thousand this year.
And twenty at last.
Twenty next. So twenty in this budget.
So that way Tennessee's got forty, and they're going to use it to take care of the trees on State Street because they've overgrown them. They're supposed to be changed every eight years, what's been eighteen.
They are free to...
What was it, flood control again?
So we did the flood control project with Bristol, Tennessee, and Army Corps of Engineers.
To Beaver Creek?
Beaver, yes, downtown. Bet some work was done up at Sugar Hollow. They've recently been doing the work over at United Way, taking out the bridge near, um, the Mexican, the old Mexican restaurant in Applebee's.
On Eighth Street.
And so we pay, uh, half of thirty-five percent of that project, and Bristol, Tennessee pays the other half. Council committed to that project.
I don't know if you've seen that tower out at the...
Fifteen years ago, probably.
How far?
I'm sorry.
Hurt dam in the park.
Wait a minute, how far, how long ago?
It's been like fifteen years since the council committed to it. Because, you know, the Army Corps of Engineers, that's a slow process because they have to get the federal funding, and they had to do the study and then the design, and so it's been a long, in progress, a long time.
That's many millions of dollars, which they paid. We paid a minimal amount in comparison.
So that flood control was how much again?
What I'm saying, Councilwoman Mumpower, is we are budgeting another two hundred thousand for the Lee Highway Phase One A project. Uh, because the bond that we got for the flood control project and the road project, we want to ensure that we have enough money to finish the two condemnation cases. And that project, VDOT, that Lee Highway Phase One A, was a Lee Ha, uh, VDOT fifty percent, City fifty percent, uh, project.
So all that stuff adds up to about three fifty roughly, so that's where you're coming up with a hundred K reduction?
The, it, what I just told you added up, if you include the one thirty-one five, adds up to four fifty-two, five. If you lease the cars, it becomes three fifty, three fifty.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah. Now, in your budget, even we gave you tonight, we have still shown purchasing those cars. So if you decide to lease them, that'll be another hundred thousand to add to this. I think, I don't need, I think we're...
More money for the reserve.
I don't even remember.
So basically, we're looking at, the only thing we're looking at then to change would be the lease versus purchase, to save a hundred grand in cash flow.
I agree with leasing the one thirty-one, if that's what you're talking about. These trees, in my opinion, is my problem with this list, these trees. These trees need to be private donations, memorial donations. We don't need to be paying for trees. We can go out and advertise and get people in the community to buy trees, to memorialize their whoever or put it in there as a private donation, and we can get every one of those trees bought with private funds.
Mr. Wingard, you missed that joy of going across town and listening to this wonderful talk about trees. An hour and a half of my life I'll never get back. Mr. Mumpower won't get it back either, neither will Mr. Hubbard or Mr. Hartley, about trees. And we were drawn by whatever Bristol, Tennessee wanted. That's how I looked at it. So I'd just soon take the twenty thousand out for the trees.
My problem with the trees, too, is not only that. I don't think the plan was put together very well on the trees.
God.
I think there's a lot more discussion on that before we commit to anything on trees, see what private monies can come into buying the trees. But now you go, start talking about digging up those trees on State Street.
Yeah, a lot of money.
We have, we have no idea what we're getting into.
University of Tennessee did the study, whether they know what they're doing or not, I don't know.
Like I said, they have no idea what they're getting into and where those root structures are going underneath that State Street pavement.
Bill Sora even said as much, he doesn't know.
We may end up with a million-five bill before you know it because of where those tree roots are going underneath State Street. So...
They're going to a big ass cave.
That better be studied a lot. We better go at that project very slowly and very methodically.
Well, let me ask a question, Ms. Crowder. If I understand, half of the money for the tree replacement is in this year's budget, and this amount would complete the project?
That's correct.
Just assuming that that's all it costs.
As, as, as cost's projected right now, which Bristol, Tennessee's done that.
It's a cave, it's a cave.
And that, as you pointed out, that assumes normal, go in, dig up a tree, and that's it, instead of having to go all the way down the block to get all the roots.
Right.
So...
In one of those roofs...
If nothing goes wrong, those are the figures, but yeah, what's, what happens if it goes wrong?
Well, it's, it, it's eighteen-year-old trees, okay? What could possibly go wrong with roof system, eighteen-year-old trees? Nothing. It is pulled right up by the root. I don't know why we're even worried about it.
Well, uh...
That's what we would hope would happen.
You know what we need to do? Cut them down and fence them.
That's what they're going to do.
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking about just...
Just cut them down, burn them, and fence them.
Make bench seats out of all the stumps.
Yeah. Instead of, oh, people come here for our trees. We just told that by somebody.
Chairs around, everybody can play checkers.
We come here to see our trees.
I don't know, State Street, I mean, uh, that is what we're famous for. We're a twin city.
Our trees?
We need to try to keep State Street looking presentable. Those trees are ugly. They produce a, uh, a, a dropping, you go park your car underneath them and you're going to go home and wash them.
Oh dude, I get you. I'm not parking underneath those trees no more, you're right. You can't even hit it off.
You park out here anywhere and a bird will poop on your car.
But I mean, State Street...
Yeah, I want to get an ordinance against that, too, while we're at it. No more bird poop.
The point, the point is, the point I'm, the point I'm trying to make on the trees is that tree project has not been studied to the level it needs to study, because there's other options to make State Street look really good without saying, we're just going to dig up all those trees and we're going to put new trees in.
I understand that, but that's what contractors are for. We have a ton of landscaping crews around here.
I know, I'm saying that hasn't been done. That due diligence needs to be done. Somebody needs to come in here and say, okay, that's one option. You dig up the trees, you put these new ones in. Well, how about let's talk about some other stuff? Talk about a nice little fence and a nice planter, and you put a, you know, a small, you know, evergreen in there that doesn't get forty-nine feet, and you still make this, you still make the street look good. There's a zillion ways to make State Street still really nice without saying, we're just going to dig them up and have to spend a million dollars potentially in fixing the road and all the public works, labor that's going to go into getting down there and digging it up. You know, I mean, it's going to be a, it's going to be a mess.
Well, I understand that, but we still need to address it. I mean, Tennessee's been ready to roll with this for a couple of years, and we've been broke, and they, we've not been able to get on board with them. But there is a lot of citizen complaints about the trees downtown.
I know, I get it, I get it, I understand, I get it. I get it. I don't think this year's the year, though. I think it's got to be studied more before you really know the best approach. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, we were basically shanghaied over on Tennessee's side, it's whatever they said when, at the city council meeting, that's how I looked at it. You know, we had...
Well, they got the University of Tennessee to do the study.
Yeah, yeah. And they came over and said, this is what we're going to get. Here's your some architectural picks. We're going to pick this, you all pay half, we're out of here. I said, y'all pay for it all, we're in. But, you know, they didn't like that option, so...
For some reason.
All right, well, I mean, I, I do think it, I guess the question is, since part of this is, is it's spread over two years and half of it's already committed, what, what does that do?
Just put it in reserve.
To the project and, and, you know, delaying it or phasing it in, I don't think, I never thought that you necessarily had to do it all at once, although I would agree, at some point, those trees are old and something does need to be done. Um, but, you know, I would rather, um, see, see other things done to improve downtown. I mean, again, I'm not going to go back and beat a dead horse, but I'd rather see money go into something like Believe in Bristol to support business downtown than the trees, uh, without the, the supporting organizations, um, so...
I think we all just go ahead and cut them down and have people, have, buy a stump.
Just take the trees out of budget.
Have people private donations and say, buy a stump, and then put their initials in the stump. I mean, or something like that.
Well, I, I don't know about cutting them down. So I guess the consensus would be not to budget the twenty thousand?
But what we've already got to the side and saved, and then once we get a study of, maybe a better, what, what happens if there are roots that are going all over the university, have to tear up the street to get them and all that? Uh, at some point, it has to be done, so I have no objection. Maybe just leaving the twenty, we've already collected, leave that in the reserve for the time being, add more to it later, once we find out what the real price is going to be.
It makes sense. It makes sense.
All right. And then was there consensus on, um, the vehicles?
I'm opposed to any more vehicles. We're vehicle four in this city.
Uh, the one thirty-one for the police cars has to happen. It was a two thousand and two model, it's got a hundred and something thousand, if I remember right.
Yeah, those are very high models, there are a lot of them.
We can't not have proper public safety vehicles for the police department. So we can go back and look at that data, but one of them was a two thousand and two model.
Who's driving that? A police officer? A detective. Detective, and we have, we talked about trying to find, I think, a good-use vehicle. And then the other two leases, you know, doing leases on the other two, has still come up to the hundred and some thousand, or is there tweaking that, Ms. Crowder?
We just had a sheriff retire, did we not, uh, Mr., uh...
Lindbergh.
Lindbergh. Is that a city vehicle, or is that a sheriff's vehicle?
Sheriff's department.
Sheriff.
Well, we pay fifty percent of it.
Well, I mean, but they replaced that sheriff, so that...
Yeah, there's going to be another sheriff in town.
Yeah.
Chief, if you looked into...
Marsha Villan is not going away forever.
Chief, if you looked into trying to find a good-use vehicle at all?
I do not, Fleet Management takes care of that.
Okay.
But he is looking into new vehicle.
Okay, just for one, the detective's car is what I'm thinking, okay, okay.
He is looking in.
All right, thank you.
I mean, I guess, I'm, I'm going to bring it up. I mean, uh, are we going to let the police department stand at three point four per capita officers when the national average is two point eight? Or we're going to keep our entire police force intact?
Well, you know, let, let's get through capital and then come back to that. That, that, we needed to, we need to discuss that.
Well, that's, um...
But...
Yeah.
So I do agree we need to discuss that. So I think we need to get through capital, and if we need to come back to capital because of that discussion, then we can talk about that.
So that means we're going to have a long meeting on Thursday night?
Yeah, yeah.
So we want to discuss, add that Thursday?
Yes, sir.
Are we still, um...
You're saying to not, not talk about that till Thursday?
We're going to have to, you're going to have to, this, we're going to do the best we can. We're meant to have a meeting Saturday, okay? You understand, understand this, too. We've been pushed, this council has been pushed because of an erroneous commissioner revenue report, two-plus hours behind, okay? So, so what's where we are. We stayed here Friday, Saturday till five o'clock. You know, we're three and a half hours in tonight, so...
That's, that's fine, uh, you know, to keep them, it's fine, just factually. So have the public hearing on, on May thirtieth. We need to do the budget ordinance Friday. So that's why I was concerned if we, if we start talking about police on Thursday, that we need to look at shifting the date of the public hearing. That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
I would say let's, I think we're pretty much done with capital. We can go through landfill, the chief is here. I would say let's have this discussion tonight. The more we can do tonight, the less we do Thursday, because we've got, as Ms. Crowder's pointed out, Mr. Eads has pointed out, I think, I've started the meeting. I mean, we have to get this done.
Have to have the numbers Thursday.
But...
Then I get you, though, I'm with you.
But we do want to, we're trying to...
We're talking about a capital proposed budget of ten point one million dollars.
Well, most of it's VDOT money.
That uses local funds with this, with the cuts you all have made.
Going through here, probably about fifty, maybe sixty percent of it's VDOT money. Uh, just skimming through, I didn't break it all down. What percentage is VDOT money that's passed through or that we've borrowed?
All, well, that we've borrowed previously, right?
Mm-hmm.
And the VDOT money. The rest, what's left is tonight, uh, tonight, my understanding is you all are the lease and the trees, and that takes a hundred and twenty-two, five off of the four fifty-two.
But also, I'm going to get to this here, with it being a, a tight budget and we needing to get money in reserves on these sidewalks on Piedmont and Airport Road and everything, can we cut back a percentage?
That's a hundred percent grant-funded.
That's a hundred percent grant, okay.
Hundred percent VDOT grant-funded. The only items that are local-funded were the ones that I talked about when I, when I went through my list, um, which was the, the cars, the police software, second-year payment, the sheriff's software, the transit bus, the ten, that's ten percent local match, um, the Lee, Lee Highway project and the, the tree replacement, which we've now took out.
That helps. All right, and let's talk about the vehicular equipment, what's that?
That's the three vehicles.
No, this is, this is equipment, this is additional equipment. Line eighty-one oh five, eighty thousand dollars. Page three of the original, not the one that was handed to us tonight.
Non-departmental city transit system, that's the bus, is that the one?
Eighty-one oh five?
Eighty ring.
That would be the bus.
That's correct, it's the bus, and ten percent of that is local funds. That's the eight thousand dollars that I mentioned before.
You're not going to buy a bus for eight thousand dollars anywhere else?
The rest, the rest of the seventy thousand is state and federal money.
Then why is our, if we're, if our, if our responsibility is eight thousand dollars, why are we showing eighty on that line?
That's what we have to pay, and then we apply to get...
There is an offsetting, on the revenue side, there's an offsetting revenue. This is the, the, the expense, so...
Okay, so we're going to get, there's a capital revenue.
Right, seventy-two thousand.
All right, and this, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar land deal, line item eighty-one sixteen. Page four.
Eight hundred and fifty thousand, under Lee Highway Road Project X five.
That's the, um, two hundred thousand of that is local. That's what I referenced before for the Lee Highway.
And we're purchasing what land?
It's, it's already been condemned, it's said, it's the condemnation settlements, there's two still outstanding. And so we want to make sure we have enough money budgeted, is what we're trying to do.
For the right-of-way?
Yes.
Road widening project.
And how many, how many people are involved in this land sale?
Well, we, there were...
Four?
There were a total of, I don't remember how many, I think Wallace is here, we're down to two that have not been settled.
There was a total of seven?
Mm-hmm.
And it's going to cost us an additional two hundred thousand dollars?
We don't know that for sure.
Okay, because I have a family member that owns some land through there, who has extended family, and the city approached them about buying it, and the city's offer on the table for that right-of-way through there, and it's several hundred feet, is, uh, what was that? I can't remember the dollar value, but it was nowhere near these hundreds of thousands. I'm, I'm thinking it was like two or three thousand dollars.
I can tell you that, I'm not going to say much, because the press is here, about a court, uh, issue that we're probably going to take, but I will say that the state changed the condemnation law. But I will say that the state changed the condemnation law, how long ago, Randy, within the last couple of years? And so it's kind of, as, as we've talked to V dot, um, you know, it's better to budget, to have some money there. And then if we don't need, if we don't end up using it, we can put it in the reserve, as we've talked about with the trees. Um, but I would certainly want to have something like.
You know, I think one of the, the things you wanna do, it, it, you know, I know some of this stuff, again, you don't, sometimes you have to estimate the amounts and you wanna make sure that you over budget in, in some of these cases. So the money's here, so you don't have to come back and reappropriate it. And, and if you do over budget, then it's, at the end of the day, it can go back into the unassigned fund balance. But this way it, it's here. You've set that much aside to cover it, which should be more than sufficient. And, and I think, you know, again, just general good budgeting, to me, you, you should over, if you try to overestimate your expenses a little bit just in case they go over and underestimate your revenues. So, uh, by overestimating that, um, again, if, if, if it's less than that, it would just revert back to the unassigned fund balance.
Yeah, it's, it's a situation where we're not gonna spend it unless we have to, but it's good to have it there in case. And it really doesn't affect our budget per se. It's strictly a cash issue.
Okay, but we're showing a six hundred thousand dollar comeback from V dot on, on this line item that's coming back to us. We're budgeting eight fifty.
There, there is some V dot funding, yes. And then, as I said, there was a bond two years ago and so there's a little bit of money there, uh, as well.
Okay. All right, then my next question is, uh, Lee Highway widening phase two land for nine hundred thousand dollars.
That's all a hundred percent V dot funded.
That's one hundred percent V dot.
Through the, that's the project through the smart scale.
The next two projects are V dot maintenance funded, so that's a hundred percent V dot maintenance. The, um, the, the one at the top of page five is a grant, as are the next, um, three. Well, the next three are grant funded, hundred percent grant funded.
Okay, and then on line five, I mean, guys, I'm just gonna ask these questions, cause we need to move on and I, I, I want the answers to these. Line, uh, page five, uh, line item eighty-one twelve.
Downtown tree replacement.
To which one?
No. Which one? There's several of them.
There's, there's several eighty-one twelves.
Which category are you looking at?
Which it can.
Uh, capital product.
The five numbers in front of eighty-one twelve.
At the top, other improvements in construction.
That was the one that she said were all V dot.
If you flip back over to the bottom of page four, it says Kings Mill Pike Radar and Friction Treatment.
Yeah.
And that's a hundred percent grant funded.
Piedmont Avenue is grant funded.
Yes.
Pauline Drive, Paulina Drive is grant funded.
Yes.
Old Airport Road, Lee Highway is grant funded.
Yes.
Downtown tree replacement. We just talked about that. We're taking that out.
Fairview Street Bridge Rehabilitation is state funded. They've started a new program. That's part of that state of good repair for the bridges, isn't it, Wallace? Okay, and that's it. So that's a hundred percent V dot funded.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
We get on that. Last item. I'm ready for it.
You're ready?
We're gonna address Windar's question or?
Yeah, he got, all the rest of them are grant funded.
No, no, I mean, I thought about the police department.
Oh, we're gonna have to come back to that on the capital.
Well, well, let's do the landfill discussion then before we.
Yeah, and then we can do the other Thursday.
Do it Thursday or do it?
Well, I, I can stay, but I, I didn't know if the rest of you wanted to stay.
All right.
Okay, so we'll have the landfill discussion next. I'm number seven.
All right, um, you all may or may not be aware, the solid waste manager has, uh, departed from the city. And, uh, prior to his departure, I sat down with him for the second time and we went through and made some additional cuts. Uh, cause I knew he, he would not be here. I, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you all have. I will also tell you that I, the city's in the, we, we have tried to sell this facility, uh, three times in the past and have not had success. Um, within the past, uh, I think it was about four years ago or so. Um, I did a collection for, I mean, a collection, an RFP for collection services and did an analysis and comparison and found, um, that with the increase in the rate, the city could do the service, uh, cheaper than a provider. We are currently in the midst of, uh, something that I can't talk about, except to say that if it comes to fruition, which it could in the next, uh, few months. Would truly be a game changer up at the landfill, um, but because of where, where we are with that right now, I can't release any details.
We're holding her on up there right now with that.
We are covering operating costs and, but we are not covering the debt. That, that's why you see the transfer from the general fund.
That's the six forty-six, six eighty?
Yeah.
At one point, the city was having to give over two million dollars a year to the landfill to keep it in operation. Now, we've had it under a million dollars for the last several years. That still doesn't cover the debt service. But I mean, it used to be two million plus the debt service. So we've cut it down. We've raised the collection fees to help offset, so we keep it under a million dollars, but it still needs to go away totally.
I, I will say one thing you'll probably notice right off is that the disposal transportation fees went down a hundred and twenty thousand. That's because we had a contract with, um, oh, Johnson County, I think. It's a county in North Carolina. And as part of that county, we had a sub that provided the transportation. But this year we renegotiated that contract with the county to take that service out of us having to be over it. And so there's an offsetting expense that goes with that, a hundred and twenty thousand.
So that was the revenue and then we got an offsetting expense that wipes it out all the way.
So when you add up all of the dollars that's being transferred from the general fund to support solid waste, what's the, what's the bottom line number that's being transferred?
Right there on page one.
I get six forty-six, six eighty.
That's it, that's it.
That's it. So right now we've got six forty-six, six eighty that's hitting us.
Right, and that, say, that's only covers our action.
Yeah, that's.
Which I say was.
Operations is covered. It's, it's the debt service that.
Right, the debt service and the liners that we had to buy were two and a half to five years.
The liners have never been in the budget to be replaced, have they not?
They just come up to capital expenses.
They come to capital and we borrow the money.
That is correct. That's happened in the past.
We need that factored into the operational cost of the landfill.
Yeah. I agree. You got, you need to accrue for that.
That, that is ongoing, rolling.
That's why.
It's gotta be part of your expenditure.
So chief financial officer, if it's gonna be, if it's gonna be a one million dollar hit in three years, you need to accrue three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars this year for that expense?
Absolutely. Yeah. So the line has had, it looks like we're in better shape than we are, we're not.
Basically, the only place you get that is from the operating fund, general fund.
So actually, we're losing, it's costing us a million dollars a year. What council got us in this?
Huh?
I know what city manager.
Well, it was back.
Cost us six forty-six.
Twenty years ago.
Never factored in the liner.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a million dollar.
You're right, you're right. It's a million dollar hit.
This six forty-six is coming out of the general operating funds right now. What you guys are talking about is to go back to the two million dollars coming out of general operating fund.
It has to be approved. You have to prove that for that, you have to count for that.
You don't have to replace that liner, but every three years, right?
Depends on the volume.
Two, three, but last year we, we did, you know, we did a double.
Right.
And so.
So what do you expect the history to be now going forward?
It's, well, what we counted on is going five years, so we have to buy.
Five years is the plan.
It was cheaper to borrow two million and one.
So in five years, you'll have another, in five years, you're expecting to have another million dollar.
Yes.
Or a million to investment, so divide that by five, so you gotta accrue one fifth of that.
So it's paying now, paying later situation.
Two hundred thousand is what you're saying.
Two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand, whatever that number is, right? Liners are probably gonna go up by that five year point, right? So you gotta accrue two hundred and forty thousand.
So that's added on to the cost of this budget.
So that's, that's two forty plus, uh, six forty-six.
Two hundred and forty-six thousand off. We gotta knock off more.
So it's eight hundred and eighty-six that we're subsidizing the landfill, basically.
Yep.
Yeah.
We gotta count for that.
Okay, my question on page two.
We won't count for it.
Two and a half years.
Line item thirty-one thirty-five, contract labor of forty thousand dollars. What are we paying that, that contract labor?
As we have cut staff up there, uh, we have supplemented with contract labor seasonally.
Were you at that page two?
They do a variety of things. They mow grass, cause we have to mow grass to be in compliance with the EQ.
We don't use our own mowers?
We do. We use the contract laborers, people to mow. Um, we use them when the trash is heavy seasonally. Um, so they do the, the work of the regular people. We just don't have year-round employees in those spots.
Plus you don't have to pay for any benefit.
So what's the hundred ninety for professional services?
Hundred ninety for professional services includes the gas monitoring, groundwater monitoring and, uh, general engineering services.
Which professional service? What pay, what line items that?
One two oh one oh, the one under disposal, I assume was the one you were talking about.
Yeah.
And why did that decrease?
It, that's, um. Excuse me. The decrease was the transportation. Uh, we had a twenty thousand dollar increase because we have to do more gra, gas well monitoring.
Say that. Overland.
You said, why did it decrease? It decreased because the Johnson County transportation came out.
Oh, okay.
That's part of that other.
Okay, so that's where it comes back out on this. Okay.
Two hundred thousand. This is a hundred thousand.
I was just wondering where, that's, you know, it went down a hundred thousand from the previous year, so I was just wondering what, what you had done there.
And then the other hundred is under the fuels and lubricant, motor fuel.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that's the two hundred thousand dollar revenue offset that we had, or whatever it was, a hundred and twenty?
A hundred and twenty, but we had an increase in the gas well monitoring that we have to do.
Okay.
You might mention that we've tried raising the tipping fees in the past to no avail, as in no business. So in order to get the kinda money from the collection and keep, keep from having to take it out of our general operating funds, the only real place you can get the revenue up is to raise the tipping fees and competition will not allow it.
What is this recycling expense? I mean, you see all the, the line items, but you don't know exactly what in all it consists of.
There, wood waste grinding, tire recycling and, uh, computer disposal, cause we can't landfill those.
And it's costing us a hundred thousand dollars a year to deal with those items?
It's forty thousand for the wood waste grinding, which then we turn around and sell the mulching compost or the mulch. Compost revenue is fifty-five thousand. Tire recycling is forty thousand, but we charge for the tires as they come in. And we have looked at that to make sure that we're charging appropriately. And then the computer disposal is ten thousand is, no.
Okay, but we've got a grinder up there that grinds up the tires.
We don't have a grinder that grinds up the tires.
I thought we did.
Well, we did at one time, but we have a contract with a company, um, because that's something else we've looked at in the past. The grinder's very old and needs a lot of maintenance upkeep. And so we, we did a study and looked at what it costs us to have the company come in and grind them versus, or take them. They don't come in, they take them and grind them, uh, versus doing it ourselves. It's a very manually labor-intensive process and that's one of the positions that we've gotten rid of.
And are we making the, are we making the money back grinding them tires? I mean, you get, we charge three dollars a tire. How much is it costing us to grind a tire?
It doesn't cost, it doesn't, not everybody pays three dollars a tire.
Depends on the size of the tire.
Depends on if it's in the, mixed in with the trash, if, if there's a contract. Um, and so if it's a load of tires, you know, that's a rate as well. If it's in the waste stream, it's like six something, I think, a tire, if it's mixed in with it. So we have looked at, like I say, we've looked at, I'll be happy to share with you those calculations that we looked at.
Here's some of the money we're getting back on the recycling stuff.
Okay, okay. Okay, next, my next question, and I don't mean to be the one, only, only one asking questions here, but my next question is, uh, material building and property. What, what do you have proposed for a hundred and forty thousand dollars?
Which, which collection are you looking at under review or?
No.
Still in the.
Line items six zero zero seven.
When we do a liner, like we're presently doing, we have to do four feet of buffer rock, um, next to the liner. That's part of the DEQ permit. And so the bulk of that cost is for the rock, cause it has to be non-calcari, non-calcarius and so it has to come from Tennessee. And, uh, that's what that is. So whenever we have a liner, that cost goes up and you can see that, well, you probably can't, cause you only have one in your actual. Um, but for example, you know, that number fluctuates between seventy, eighty to a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifty thousand, depending on where we are, uh, with the liner.
So a liner's a million and then it costs us a hundred and forty to install it?
Well, a cost addition, I don't think that all, that doesn't all represent liner expense. But when it jumps like it does, that, that's the difference between those numbers, so forty grand to do the liner install for the rock.
We, I mean, we spend a lot on rock in general, just because of the upkeep of the roads. They do a good job trying to, uh, use materials that we get that come, that comes in. I know they work closely with the street department. Um, for example, when they just took the road out to put the sidewalk in on Martin Luther King, they took all that to the landfill and they used it to base some road. So they, they're, they are resourceful in trying to make use of what they have.
So I'm sure everybody's thinking the same thing I'm thinking. We got all the rock we need up there at Exit Five. Can you not?
Not the right.
It's not non-calcarius.
It's not the right rock for the permit?
Right. And we've talked to DEQ about trying to get that changed. And, um.
So if you sent that rock to DEQ to have them analyze it, they wouldn't come back and do a special permit approval? It's granite for crying out loud.
Okay.
I mean, isn't it? I mean, what kinda rock, what's the specialty of the type of rock? Well, I mean, what, what are they looking for?
Let me look at that and get back to you. It's because it sits right next to the, uh, the water.
I think it has to do with some absorption qualities of the rock versus granite wouldn't absorb anything, so it wouldn't help hold fluids back as well as this rock. Which still better to find out for sure what it is.
I thought we were asking our resident civil engineer here. I was trying to see if she.
You are, and I started to say something, but I'm not gonna say it in front of David Nigget.
She hadn't, she didn't major in trash dump.
We, um.
Where were you in college in that class?
We have.
You fall asleep or something?
We have looked at numerous other materials to use in the buffer, but I'm not opposed to continuing to look at that. Um, but that's something we would have to do, you know, we can't get that done prior to this budget. I mean, that's something we would have to work on next year. And, you know, I'll be hiring a new solid waste manager and so they'll, they might have all kinds of ideas.
Okay. We probably do, speaking of, we probably do need a revised list of key positions in this city that has to be filled.
Or, 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 or think have to be filled.
Yeah, if it's, if it's critical, I mean, we've done without the, uh, help me out here, the, uh.
Economic planning.
For over a year now.
No.
That, that's critical. We need that filled.
We're gonna discuss this.
And then, but I mean, we just need a revised.
If we're going to Washington County, it's a possibility, you know, like, like you said, we got rid of eight quarter tonight. That money would. rid of Eighth Order tonight, that money was thrown away, we're not having that anymore. You know, if we don't actually work with Washington County and actually get someone that actually has some business experience and some sense and so forth, we're defeating the purpose again, we're down the key gene path we had with our former economic development person. And look where that got wrestled. And the bottom line is, we need to meet with Washington County. From my perspective, Mr. Mumpire and I have been talking about this for a year.
Have you talked to Washington County?
No, nobody, everybody says the same thing, we haven't even...
We'll cross that, let's get back to the budget. We just need a revised list of positions that need filled.
We have talked to Washington County.
Line item eighty-one, twelve, $150,000. Last year, it was 2 million, this year it goes to 150. What are we talking about here?
Eighty-one, one-two, that's the landfill liner, that's where...
That's the $2 million for the five years worth of liners that we got.
Okay, so now are we budgeting it in 150 this fiscal year to start paying for that liner?
No, what we're saying is, is there's 150,000 of bond money that we've not completed construction on the landfill liner due to the rain conditions, and so we anticipate having that much that we pay after July one of what we borrowed last year.
In other words, we still had 150 grand left out of the 2 million. We didn't get it spent in the current year budget, so it's going to go into...
So it carries over.
Yeah, just to carry over, there's no additional anything.
And then you got to increase that to 240 plus 150 to accrue the liner expense over the next five years, right?
Okay.
What's the motor fuel and lubricants again?
That's, we decreased that based on the three-year average, so that's the diesel.
Okay. Did you ask about the leasing of equipment, the 341?
No.
We, and I'd...
Leasing rent of equipment went from 281 up to 341 from one year to the next?
Which one?
Five-four, fifty-four-ten.
Twelve-oh-one-nine.
Yeah, twelve-oh-ten, five-four-one-oh.
Yeah, we had a compact release that expired, and so we have a new one, and it's a dozer, a compactor, a small loader, and a track loader lease.
So basically, that's going the same every year until it is paid out?
Well, in 2015, 16, we had a, you're talking about line item 54-10?
Yeah.
54-10, two years ago, in 15, 16's budget, that line item was $7,000, then it went to 91 the year after, and 127?
No, we're not looking at that.
Is that...
We're looking up here still, and that's...
Okay. Okay, sorry.
You're down in records.
Two years ago, that one paid out, now we're on a new piece of, several pieces of equipment.
Any more questions about landfill, either collections or disposal? All right.
But I think, Mr. Mayor, realistically, this is four hours into this meeting, the police department needs to be revisited, as Mr. Wingard suggested. I know you want to push this through tonight, but I'm going to tell you, there's a point of diminishing returns when we keep doing this. This wasn't on the agenda, I don't think I was prepared for it, perhaps Mr. Wingard is, but I think we meet here Thursday morning, or Thursday evening, and we discuss the police department, maybe the Clear Creek Golf Course a little bit too, before we actually surmise it, but this is, this is...
I mean, this, I mean, I'm more than happy to stay, even though I still haven't had any supper yet.
Look, I'm done, we're done, I'm done.
Well, we have to finish Thursday.
I get that, let's come back tomorrow night then, but I'm done for tonight, I'm tired. We're going like five and six hours, we got to, we got to put a reasonableness to this, and I'm done, no more discussions tonight. We adjourn, we come back tomorrow night, we have to, or we come back early Thursday, either one.
I agree with that, we don't need to make crazy decisions, because we're tired and in a hurry to get out of here.
What about coming at four?
Can we, we have to announce it?
I can't.
Do four o'clock Thursday?
I can't.
You can't?
I can't, no.
Okay, well, we'll either have to finish Thursday or have an extra 10 meetings in June to get there. Of course, the public notice for the, has to be two weeks.
What's wrong with tomorrow night?
No, I mean, well, I've got plans tomorrow night too.
Church night. We couldn't do it anyway, couldn't we?
We have to do 12 hours' notice.
All right, so I guess, I mean, Thursday, though, we do need to finish this, I mean, and I know, so we want to discuss the police...
In Clear Creek.
In Clear Creek, so we, I know the chief is back there, so he can plan on...
We've got to bring this back up again, too, we're looking at a million-dollar deficit on this landfill every year, and we went down the majority of this page, and we not cut $1 out of this landfill.
There's nowhere to cut.
We got to find it.
It's mostly...
Well, how about paper, some?
We got to find it.
That's the answer to that mess.
We certainly need to find it, but I don't think we can find it.
There's, Clear Creek and the police.
Yes, sir.
Get it all ready for next...
Okay, and then we need to, please, I mean, I know Thursday could be a long night, but please plan to stay as long as it takes, because we have to get this done so that we can advertise it and have the public hearing. I mean, I understand, and trust me, I don't like being here late at night either, but I mean, it has to get done.
We have to, we take more breaks too, and kind of refresh ourselves, I think we only had one break online, and, you know, you need to refresh your mind a little bit.
Are there any other topics y'all want me to put on? I mean, property maintenance, do you want that on?
Absolutely, I would like to talk about that.
Open positions, right?
Okay.
All the staff open positions, police, Clear Creek, what you just said.
Uh-huh.
Is every, can everybody leave Friday night? We have to.
But I think to meet the schedule of the public hearing, we have to have this...
Have to announce it Friday.
Well, we could do that, but, but we, if we, we would not, if we don't finish Thursday, she needs to have this, what we agree on to the newspaper Friday in order that it can be advertised, to still have the public hearing on May 30.
So what's the deadline Friday?
I mean, really, the deadline, gentlemen, is Thursday night, we've got to know the numbers, otherwise, we are getting extremely close, and probably way too close for comfort to push this off to meeting on Saturday, and then potentially running an ad on Tuesday if we come to an agreement on Saturday.
You can.
I mean, it's, I mean, there's not enough time.
Those two hours, like, real...
Thursday night, I'll buy everybody dinner Thursday night, we'll take a break, whatever we need to do.
But I mean, you're assuming the normal city council meetings, you're not assuming a specially-called meeting in between the ones we've got scheduled between now and the end of June, right?
Well, we have to, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have to advertise the public hearing at least a week, week in advance, then we have the public hearing, and then we have to, if we make any changes, then we have to advertise that...
Correct.
A week or two weeks in advance.
Or one week.
Week in advance, have the first reading of the budget ordinance, and then have to wait at least a week to...
Before you can have the second reading and adoption.
They might want to start planning a meeting with 340,000, cut Thursday night, just to kind of prepare, and have to, my set. Okay. Do we adjourn with the police mayor?
All right, so you have those items, what was it, the police, the golf course...
Key positions.
Key positions and...
Property maintenance.
Property maintenance, okay. And then, like I say, we do need to get that finished, I know it's going to take a while, but we've got to get this done. That being said, we'll call this meeting adjourned.